All right. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who were not here last night for the first night of special town meeting, my name is Dennis Reep and I am the elected town moderator. I hereby call for the reconvening of the adjourned session of special town meeting of the town of Boxborough from last night. We have completed the business of special town meeting articles one and two as of last night. For those of you that were here last night, thank you for your active participation in town government. We had the largest turnout since 2013 when school regionalization was on the warrant. So, thank you all. I think regardless of how we all voted last night, I think we can agree that democracy is alive and well here in Boxborough. So, thank you. We will continue with the remaining business of the special town meeting and then take up annual town meeting once the special is completed. So, the same rules and procedural motions from last night apply. Let's see, the other difference in the room is we do have refreshments in the back courtesy of the Boxborough Conservation Trust. Rita, you're back there? Yeah, we can visit Rita? All right, so we're on to special town meeting articles three through five. These have been identified as consent agenda articles. As I described last night, consent articles were unanimously recommended by the select board and the finance committee as have been identified in advance as items that would likely pass without debate and are intended to be acted upon as a unit. I will now go through these articles one by one by name. If one or more voters objects to including any particular article in the consent agenda and you wish to debate it, please say "hold" in a loud voice when I read the title of that article. That article will then be removed from the consent agenda. After the name of the number five article has been read, I will ask for a motion from the select board chair, Kristin Hilberg, on all articles remaining in the consent agenda be passed as a unit by town meeting. We will then go back and discuss any of those hold articles one by one in the usual fashion for standalone articles. So, here we go.
I just wanted to debate some of these articles, but is there a place one can go to to find out where they're at there? Like this, the $12,000 is going to be for command staff training. Who considers command staff training?
If you have a question that's not answered in the written warrant or in the motion itself, I would recommend you put a "hold" on it so we can debate it or ask questions or comment on it.
Is there an alternative to that? I mean, is there a webpage or something like that?
On a specific article?
Yeah, one of these articles.
Some have information on the town website, but I can't answer for 49-something articles ahead of us.
You can miss us if we want to. Don't take it serious.
Is there a microphone, please?
We've got that. We've got four of them.
Mike, is there any place for...
So, for that particular one, there is not amplifying information on the website, but the police chief is here and he can certainly give more information and details on that article.
Yeah, so back to the intent of consent. The idea is they're packaged as a unit and allowing us to simply vote them as a group because they're not controversial. They've been fully recommended by both select board, FinCom. But if anyone has a question or concerned with any of them, wants to comment, wants to ask a question, the way we would do it would be to hold it and we would take it out and we could address it specifically. So, if you have a question on three, when I read the article, I recommend you say "hold" and we will then take it out and you can ask the question after we get through the rest of them. All right, consent agenda. Article three, Police Department Command Staff Training.
Hold.
All right, we'll hold article three. Article four, Community Preservation Fund Accounting Correction. Article five, Adopt MGL Chapter 200A Section 3A Tailing.
Hold.
Hold on article five. All right, to the main motion. So, Kristin, we need to have a motion to approve town meeting consent agenda warrant articles four. There's only one. Do I have a motion, Kristin?
I move to approve the special town meeting consent agenda warrant article four in accordance with the funding sources and amount set forth in the May 12th, 2025 special town meeting warrant under articles three through five respectively.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay? That carries by majority. All right, we're back to article three. Article three, we need a motion from the select board and I have Dave McKierney on the list.
Article three, Police Department Command Staff Training. I move that the town vote to transfer from available free cash the sum of $12,000 for the training of Police Department Command Staff.
There's moved and seconded. Recommendation from the select board.
The select board unanimously recommends this article. Making this one-time training available to our police department supports efforts to improve the management and leadership skills of our senior-level staff. We believe it is a good investment to have well-trained leaders in public safety positions.
Recommendation from the finance committee.
Finance committee recommends unanimously.
Questions from the floor. Kathy, this is your chance to get over to the microphone. All right, so name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Vorse, 555 Liberty Square Road. My question is, who, maybe not by name, but maybe by rank, and how many people actually get this training?
Mike, should we have the chief answer that or are you prepared?
Please, chief.
Hi, John Chefick, Chief of Police here in Boxborough. Thank you. I have a short presentation if you'd like to go over it. I will be sending one individual, the lieutenant, to this training. So, I don't know if that...
Okay, one of my concerns was whether there was going to be enough staff training that there is the ability to have some redundancy within a department so that, God forbid, you find a better job in another town, somebody will be prepared to step in. That's kind of where I'm coming from on this question.
Yeah, that is the purpose of it. I identified the need for succession planning as one of the strategic initiatives this past year and in part in doing that was ensuring that I provide command staff training to the commanders in the department. So, that's what, you know, that's why I put this warrant article in. There's the Southern Police Institute and there's also PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum, which is most likely the one I'll be sending the individual to. It would be the rank of lieutenant, the individual who's a lieutenant and primarily to your point, that's why is for, you know, long-term succession planning and ensuring that individuals in the department have the skillset to run a department.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone to my left, please. Name and address.
Actually, Mr. Moderator, Cindy was up here first. I'd like to defer.
Okay, yep. That's fine by me.
Thank you. Doesn't matter. Cindy Markwitz, 99 Meadow Lane. Just wanted to get a sense about training overall and how much of the police budget annually is spent on training and this sounds like a one-time train, training for this one particular individual, but could you give some context of how much the department spends on training annually and would this be a recurring event if that person leaves? And just give us some context.
Sure. The operating budget, during the operating budget, it's went up. I can give the exact number. I believe $12,600. That's for the department-wide and that's in the operating budget. That includes a variety of classes from a new officer right out of the academy to an experienced officer or a detective we want to get more specialized training for. So, that's the operating budget, $12,000. There's a couple of other things put in there that I'm looking to move to, kind of like an online monthly. It's done by the Police Institute, like a roll call type training, but primarily that $12,000 is what sends, I use to send individuals to training. This happens to also be $12,000, but really there's very little, it just happens to be the cost of PERF. It's about $11,800 to send in an individual for three weeks, but that's a one-time cost. Not that it couldn't come up again in a couple of years from now if I want to send a different individual, but that's a one-time cost. But yes, the operating budget is about approximately $12,000 a year. That's for the entire department. That's a $300 course here, a $200 course here, and then this is a one-time, you go away for three weeks and you attend that training.
Okay, and is there a cost to filling in that position while that person, is that the three-week training?
Not particularly because it's a lieutenant and I can give him a change of assignment. If it was more of a patrol function, there is. So, sometimes in that $12,000, although it comes from the salary line and not the expense line, there is sometimes backfilling if I send a person away for two or three days. But if I send a person on the command staff away for three weeks, no, there's really not backfilling. It's myself or maybe one of the sergeants stepping up and picking up some of the administrative work that needs to be done during that period.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now to my left.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. To just follow up on Cindy's questions, you said that this is a one-off. My question is, is this, are you not including it in the budget, encapsulating it in the budget? Because to the fire, several of the fire articles, you folks are trying to be a little bit more transparent in what your off, you know, your one-off spending is.
I'm sorry, am I trying to be more transparent or less?
More.
Oh, no, I actually, to be perfectly honest, I had it in the operating budget and it was almost like a double, 100% increase. And in talking with the finance committee, they made the recommendation and I agree with it. It really is, it's a one-off. It's not something I'm going to do every year. So, we said do it as a warrant article, bring it to the townspeople as a separate warrant article and talk about the need for, you know, and I don't want to just talk about succession planning, but also just the need for highly-trained people on the command staff, whether I'm there, I'm not there, for a day, a week, or just every day of their job. So, I don't know about transparency, but we did want to, you know, we didn't want to double the line for one year in the operating budget. So, this way we take it out, we show it. It could come back three, four, or five years from now depending on the makeup of the staff, but that's kind of why it was done this way.
And just a quick question. Is this going to enhance, I can't remember what the certifications that you folks had, the pre-post certifications that you guys launched the program with? Is this going to help with your standing in that kind of training or standing in this state?
No, this is not part of the in-service training that every police officer, whether you've been here for one year or 20 years or 25 years. It's separate from the mandated state in-service training. That's 40 hours a year, also firearms, also CPR, first aid. So, it's exclusive of that. This is more command-level training, learning how to do budgets, recruitment, retention, officer wellness, community relations, public PR, things like that, which is more specific to a commander in a department.
Right, because you referenced that this is in line with developing a succession plan. So, if you're unavailable, the lieutenant has the skills to step in if necessary, I assume.
Well, yes, I think every department should have not just one individual, but multiple individuals who can step up and do the work of somebody in a rank maybe above them for either a short period of time due to maybe illness, injury, or a longer period of time. But I think building your supervisors, obviously we impress upon about people in the academy and newer officers, we want to get them the skillset to be a good police officer, but you also want your sergeants, your lieutenant, to have good administrative skills to step up when they're needed as well.
Thank you.
Seeing no one at a microphone. All in favor of article three, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That passes by majority. Motion on article five, select board.
I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, relative to the disposition of abandoned funds by the town.
Recommendation from the select board?
The select board recommends for the reasons printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the finance committee.
The finance committee recommends unanimously.
Microphone to my right, please.
Kathy Vorse again. My only question is, what are the amounts at issue here? Or the cumulative amount?
Mr. Moderator, can I defer to our treasure collector?
Please.
Hi, Naomi, come on up.
So, we have about $25,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next in line, name and address, please.
Cole McConnell, 152 Flag Hill Road. I just wanted to ask for anybody who might know the answer. Having read the general law section in question, subpart E seems to indicate that this could potentially open up the town to litigation if, for example, unclaimed funds are not collected by the date of public notice and public hearing, at which point a claimant could then theoretically make a final claim in court. I just wanted to see if anybody had any knowledge about that.
I don't have knowledge on that.
Mike or reference to counsel or...
So, I did look into Mass. General Law and I saw that the risk to that is very, very low. Currently, we do not have, we have not accepted this local option. So, as Naomi said, we have $25,000 sitting out there that people haven't cashed these checks, the town can't take it back, it's just in limbo. It makes sense to us to at least offer the town the ability to follow the procedure set forth with multiple notifications, notifications to the people these checks have been sent to. And then after we have met the requisite number of trying to reach these folks, then we can go ahead and put the money back into the general fund. So, we see the risk as very low and we don't see this going to litigation.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no one at the microphone, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion under article five, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That carries by majority. Just a point of order, last night, we did have the yes or no microphones. Tonight, we're just reverting back to what's been more typical practice, free-for-all. So, you line up whichever mic you like and I'll try to recognize you in the order you get up there, but once there's a line, I'll just alternate in typical fashion. Motion under article six, select board.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $4,415 to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, and upon such terms and conditions as the select board may determine in its discretion for conservation purposes, a parcel of land located on Taylor Farm Road comprising about 8.3 acres and identified as parcel 20-081-000 on the town's assessor's maps and being more particularly depicted as parcel one on the plan entitled Silas Taylor Farm Road at Flag Hill Road, Boxborough, Massachusetts, dated and endorsed by July 19, 2016 by Goldsmith, Priest, and Ringwall Inc., recorded with Middlesex South D history, South District Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 691 of 2016, and to authorize the select board to enter into all agreements and take all other actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this transaction.
Okay, select board majority opinion?
Okay, so this one's a little complicated. Back in 2022, the developer of Silas Taylor Farm Road, sorry for stumbling, by the way, lots of words here, approached the select board and asked if, you know, if we would, the town would accept this parcel of land. At the time, we had an interim town administrator who was advising the board, who said, there's really no reason to accept this because there's nothing we can truly do with it. There was some discussion. I actually went and watched the meeting in question. There was some discussion and ultimately, the final words of the select board were, go ahead and develop this land, we'd rather have a house and we'd rather have the tax dollars. So, the developer took that as a select board endorsement that he should go build a house on this land. So, he went through the process and it was determined that his subdivision permit wouldn't actually allow it. He thought that because the selectman had said build a house, the planning board would be inclined to say, sure, go ahead and build a house, but the subdivision, like I said, permit didn't allow it, it was denied. So, he came back again to us, explained what happened, and this board thought, all right, let's try to do what's right. You know, he was trying to develop this parcel, couldn't do it. He's been a good citizen, he's paid taxes on it all these years, so we can't give his taxes back, but we could buy the parcel for the equivalent of the property taxes he's paid to date. There is concern that this sets a precedent, that any developer will, can spend any amount of money they want and the town will just give it back to them, but we feel that because there's traceable, trackable, extenuating circumstances, that the right thing to do is to accept the land, you know, pay him his property taxes, bring it into the town, you know, the town's resources.
Minority opinion from the select board?
Okay, so, sorry, it was getting unscrewed. The minority of the select board does not believe we should pay for this parcel of land. The developer did come to the meeting and say, if you don't accept this, I will build on it. So, we said, okay. And it is unfortunate that he was not, it's not unfortunate because it's the planning board's right to review site plans for site plan approval. And it is not the town's fault that he was not able to get site plan approval for whatever reason. And I just don't think we should be back paying him for his taxes and spending taxpayer dollars which could be used elsewhere, like some of the other warrant articles we just voted on or in the future. So, that is why I dissented.
Okay, finance committee, majority recommendation?
Majority of the finance committee recommends the acceptance of this property. It would correct an error made by the town in 2022. While the finance committee recommends the acceptance of this land and payment of paid taxes since 2022, it is not the intent to set a financial precedent.
Finance committee, minority opinion, please.
The minority of the finance committee believes that this article demands an unnecessary taxpayer-funded payment in addition to an otherwise reasonable proposal. Acceptance of the parcel should not require reimbursement of taxes paid while the parcel was duly owned by the developer.
Do we have a recommendation from the Conservation Commission? Sam, you may approach the mic, name and address and roll.
Sam Anderson, 220 Sergeant Road, speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission, which recommended this unanimously.
All right, we'll go to the floor. Microphone to my left. I think you were there first. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Michelle Ryan. I'm at 612 Hill Road. I'm on my toes here. All right, that's okay. I was just curious, reading in the warrant, what are the anticipated maintenance costs for this piece of land considering it's less than desirable and was rejected three times before?
Ed Kukel, are you here to talk about that? There is, I believe we're already maintaining storm drainage on the property, but I'd prefer that Ed speak to it since he's the one that takes care of it.
This is one of our unsung heroes, you guys. This is the guy that makes sure our mailboxes get fixed when they get knocked over. This is the guy that makes sure...
And broken.
Okay, all right, okay. No, 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 we're going positive, glass half full, but this is one of our unsung heroes. I think the police and the fire get credit all the time for everything they do for us and I'd like to give this man a little applause.
Nice job, Ed.
Transfer station, should I make a list of all the things you do that we love? The transfer station?
No, not now.
Not now.
Good evening and thank you. As of this time, the only thing we maintain is the, is the catch basins that are along the road and then where it feeds into a brook that's just down at the bottom of Reed Farm Road. At this point...
Taylor Farm.
I mean, Taylor Farm, sorry. At this time, though, we haven't had any need to do anything at the culvert exit, so there is really, unless there's a storm, there's no need for us to do anything except to check the basins and we do have them cleaned once a year, so most of the material will not go into that, that stream.
I don't know what else I could ask. Thanks. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, microphone to my right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rich Gazzardi, 92 Reed Farm Road. So, this shouldn't have happened, but it did. And it's unfortunate, but this is something we need to clean up. The subdivision plan, so as a member of the planning board, we reviewed this when it came back after three rejections by the select board. The subdivision plan that was initially approved by the, by the planning board specifically showed that parcel and it showed conservation land to be granted to the town. So, the developer had that approval from the planning board. The developer moved forward on the basis that that was going to happen. It's unclear whether, what level of coordination happened between the planning board, Conservation Commission, select board at the time, but that's the point, that was clear in the drawing. So, that was his plan. Then, he went to the select board and got rejected three times. I'll say we can do better as a town and I'm not pointing, this is like collectively we can do better. Like, if a developer comes forward and the planning board is including on a drawing that we're going to allow, this is going to be gifted, then there should be coordination and an alignment, right? I get people change, boards change, decisions get made differently, but fundamentally, that was the expectation. When this came before the planning board last year, several neighbors showed up and, you know, their perspective was, hey, we bought a parcel and right behind my house, it's marked, this is going to be conservation land, and now it's not. And it's conceivable that the developer could have put a house there. He had a plan, he, I mean, there were things to work through, but we were walking down the path of putting another house there because of this rejection. So, he was frustrated, arguably so, reasonably so, and so the, I think the consideration of paying some sum of money to compensate him for taxes, it's unfortunate, we shouldn't be here, but we are. This should not be precedent-setting, but I recommend you just vote for this and we need to commit to doing better going forward. Thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Rita Grossman, 291 Depot Road. Yes, I just agree that everything he just said, it's unfortunate, we're in this situation, but my question is a technical one. Will this be under the Conservation Commission and will the funds, where will the funds to fund this $4,000, where will they come from? Will they be coming from the Conservation Trust Fund or where will they come from?
Free cash.
Free cash, okay, thank you. Oh, and it'll be cons come, right?
Yeah, it'll be conservation, okay.
Microphone to my right.
Sorry, another short person. Carol Dion, Burrows Road. I bike by that stretch of land all the time and it's basically a drainage ditch for all the houses up the hill. So, it's not as conservation, I don't think it's going to have any value because it's going to be drainage from everybody's lawn and their lawn treatment plants. It's going to be full of nitrogen and algae, so give it some consideration. Thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. Do we have a map of the parcel?
Not one that I can put up on a screen. No, we didn't prepare a map. Sorry.
So, we have no idea what this property looks like, where it's located, its purpose, and we're going to give money back to a person that is an extremely successful developer because he has convinced the town that the drainage ditch that he engineered in order to service the runoff to the lady's point for his million-dollar houses that they built on the hill is, I mean, why can't Mr. Kaufman just take the time now and donate the land back to the town?
So, I want to clarify, to some degree, it doesn't matter whether he's a successful developer or a failure. That's immaterial.
No, that's not what I'm getting at. I'm saying he's a businessman.
No, but I just want to clarify. I understand. So, the way, he came to donate to give the land to the town and explain what happened and per what Rich Gazzardi explained, three times the town declined it. It was always expected to be donated and the subdivision plan always had the drainage there. It's 8.3 acres. Perhaps the town planner or Ed can speak to how much of that is drainage and how much of it isn't. Regardless, it's there and it's happening. And because he was encouraged to go back another time and try to develop that and Rich explained all of that, the select board felt that the right thing to do was to at least reimburse him his property taxes and the only way to do that was in this method. But to your point... your point, we just feel that we need to do the right thing. We, we were supposed to accept that the first time. We were supposed to accept it the second time. We were supposed to accept it the third time. So that's on us.
Why were we supposed to?
Because it was on the subdivision plan to be designated as conservation land, and he had always intended that it be moved into the town, the, the town's inventory.
So, can you stop the clock? Thank you. All right. Yeah. That was his intention. Did the town ever agree? Did the select board ever agree when the subdivision plan was submitted?
To Rich Gazardi's point, it's on the subdivision plan, and it says conservation. It's right on the plan, and it wouldn't come to the select board until it was time to accept the parcel.
So the planning board accepted the conservation?
No, they issued a subdivision, they, issued approval for a subdivision plan, which noted that those 8.3 acres would eventually become conservation land.
So who in the town was responsible to accept this as conservation?
The select board. And three times, the select board said, no, thank you.
Right. Three times, the select board said, no, thank you. And then my last question, I'm very disappointed that we have no concept, concept on the screen, so we can understand exactly how this property is gonna benefit the town. And also, my bigger question is, if this is going to be deeded to the conservation commission, why is, are these funds not coming out of the conservation trust? That's the intent of the conservation trust.
Because it was the select board's decision that we felt the right thing to do is reimburse, we tried to make him whole, not reimburse, tried to make him whole in terms of his taxes, and we felt free cash was the place to do that. It wasn't the conservation commission's fault that it wasn't accepted. It was the select board's decision. And they were given advice by an interim town administrator that said, no, don't take it, keep, you know, just keep taking those taxes. Well, we didn't feel that was right, and it was always intended to be turned over to the town. So we're trying to honor the intention, honor the spirit. The town of Boxborough has always accepted parcels like this, and we felt that free cash was an appropriate way. Didn't feel fair to take that out of the conservation trust's money when it's taxpayer, you know, taxes that came in that we're trying to make whole.
So one more point. So this is a drainage ditch--
It's more than that. It's more than a drainage ditch.
It was an engineered drainage ditch at the end of the street. There may be upland to it. But we are also, just like when we accept a road, we are now, and I know Ed said in the near future, it will not cost, but it will be the town's responsibility and not the developer's responsibility to maintain the proper wetlands configuration for this particular parcel, correct?
I'm gonna defer that to Ed, because I believe we have to maintain it no matter what. We've already been maintaining it, even though it is private property. Ed, can you speak to how we manage drainage?
Sure. For the most part, what we do is, all the, all the culverts that drain into a ditch are maintained. They're, they're checked often to, probably once a year to make sure that they do drain correctly and aren't obstructed. Once they leave our property, though, wherever it goes is not the town's responsibility. I've never gone on private property to, or, or my staff to have something taken care of that is not on our land. I do not think that he engineered that ditch. That ditch has always been there. It's been part of our, our, if you look at that, there is, there is no plan of them doing anything there. Most of their runoff is controlled with the basins up the hill into a drainage detention pond or something of that nature, so the water can filter down into the ground. You know, Alec may talk more about that, too. But there was, I believe, I'm not, I don't want to say I'm 100% sure, but there's a basin past the corner of, of the road on our, our existing road that drained into that. And we collect some of that runoff from his property that goes down into that ditch. But I do not believe that that ditch was made by the developer. That was always there.
Respectfully to your point, you said, when you look at it, but unfortunately, we can't look at it tonight, because there is no--
When I, when I looked at it.
Thanks for the clarification, Ed. I appreciate it.
I think Cindy was here first.
I gotta hold my spot. Cindy Markowitz, 99 Meadow Lane, also a member of the planning board. One additional piece of information is that the planning board, when they granted the subdivision, our rules require that a subdivision be limited to 10 new lots. This particular project developer was allowed to develop 11 lots at the time that the subdivision was granted. If he had developed, this would have been a 12th lot if he had developed that. So he had already received a variance to allow him to build 11 lots, when normally our rules require 10. But I actually have a question for the select board. Would you accept this donation of land without a payment at this time?
Yes, we discussed that, and we would.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Reid Grossman, 291 Depot Road, also president of the Boxborough Conservation Trust. The Boxborough Conservation Trust strongly supported that the select board accept this land as conservation land. It's 8.29 contiguous acres. And if that is a laptop, you can, using the GIS on the town map, I could pull it up in 30 seconds, and everyone could see where it is.
That's if, if there's internet connection.
With, there's internet connection, A B guest. And you could see that it's 8.3 contiguous forested acres. It serves as a good buffer between the Flag Hill houses and the Taylor Farm houses. And the whole situation is tragically unfortunate that the select board was ill-advised, because other developers have done this. There's these bits and parcels of land all throughout the town, and they do serve important habitat functions. Okay, and then just use, go up to the upper right and just use the base map, yeah, upper right, yep, click. Nope, up top, top where the three lines are, yep, click that, and pick imagery. There you go.
Wow.
Okay. See? Look at that. So you can see, this is not just a drainage ditch. And I recall when we were first looking at this, when it was part of 22 acres, and it was highly valued for conservation, but it was gonna cost a lot of money, it wasn't in chapter, and there was no capacity to conserve the land. And this was a reputable developer. So, but I always recall there being a drainage ditch there. So it's, it's more than just a ditch at the road, as you can see. So there's the map.
Lindsay King, Robinson Road. I just wanted to start by saying, I'm concerned about tax increases. And I sort of support the position of the minority finance board in that, you know, was a mistake made, perhaps. It's hard to say, given where we stand today. But we shouldn't be giving the money back to the developer for that, and coming from, essentially from our taxes, right? Going forward, it seems like a modest amount of money to spend to get what appears to be a, a nice piece of land. I appreciate that context that was given there. But it also feels like it's, it was part of the cost of developing the site, right? So certainly, I can support reimbursing the developer for those taxes. Okay, thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Mary Nadworski, 70 Stonehedge Place. Do not be shocked, this is a first.
You're not making a motion, Mary?
I'm not moving the question. So I do have a question. I believe, if I understand correctly, that the subdivision plan that states the land is to be donated for conservation land, that that plan is recorded at the registry of deeds. It's been endorsed and appropriately recorded at the registry of deeds. Can anyone confirm that?
I can confirm that.
So I guess I'm going to encourage everyone that since this is recorded at the registry of deeds, and since the amount of money is under $5,000, it's conceivable to me that the developer, the developer alone, or my neighbors, because I am in a butter, could then, we could then have litigation ensue. And I'm guessing that litigation is going to cost us a lot more than $5,000. So I encourage everyone, this was a mistake, we all agree. Everyone has spoken eloquently, but you may have an opportunity to save a whole lot more than $5,000.
Microphone to my right, please.
Howard Lee, 90 Bicentennial Way. I just wanted to say that anybody can look at this. If you've got Google Maps, just go to Street View, and you can have a look at it for yourself. It's on your cell phone. The terrain is quite steep, and right now, that slope has been held together by trees, and it would be good to keep that slope together. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, I think Kathy was in line ahead of John, so we'll go to the right again, and then we'll go back to the left.
Kathy Vorus, Liberty Square Road. I just wanted to clear up a misunderstanding. There's not a lot that Cheryl misunderstands, but I think subdivision control law is one. The subdivision control law is a separate piece of legislation that the planning board administers, and when someone comes in with a parcel of land, they want to introduce a road into and break off lots. It goes through an extensive review process. People participate, shape, configuration, number of lots are all taken into account, distance, length of road, finish of road, who's gonna be in charge of it afterwards. But it winds up being a package decision that includes such things as required in the subdivision control law, that there be some benefit given to the town. And this was seen, wasn't our planning board, but the then-sitting planning board determined that that was part of the deal, that it would go to the town. Now, unfortunately, the select board, whoever they were, for the prior three rejections that this guy got, were not well-studied in the subdivision control law, and were advised by someone who also was not very familiar with that. So this never got reported back to the planning board as the deal they made being overridden in some way by the selectmen. So I will confess, I was pretty miffed when it came to us that a liberality had been taken with a subdivision decision. And I think this is a very fair decision, because this gentleman, and I have no prior acquaintance with him, but he's paid a lot more than $5,000 of taxes. This is only the reimbursement from 2022 to the present. But he's been dragging that lot along, trying to fulfill his commitment to the planning board according to that subdivision approval, and I think he deserves the benefit of the doubt.
Microphone to my left.
Channeling my friend, Mary. Mr. Moderator, remove the question.
Name and address.
John Fallon, 500 Paddock Lane.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we stop debate and vote on the article now. This takes two-thirds. It's not debatable. This is just to end debate on this article. So all those in favor of ending debate, raise your green cards high. Cards down, all those opposed. That carries by a majority. We, we, two-thirds, carries by the two-thirds required. Now on to the main motion. Taylor Farm Road, acceptance, as seen on the screen. The motion on that requires a two-thirds also. I'll remind myself of that. All in favor of Article Six, the motion on Article Six, raise your cards. All opposed, raise your cards. That carries by the two-thirds required. Ms. Hilberg, may I have a motion to dissolve the special town meeting?
You may. I move to dissolve the May 12, 2025 Boxborough Special Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, seeing no one at the microphones. All in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, raise your green cards. All opposed, raise your green cards. That carries by a majority. Okay, special town meeting is over. We'll now continue with the annual town meeting that started last night. Article One is the election, which will be voted on May 20. We'll go now to and ask the select board for a motion under Article Two. Article Two is receive reports.
Oh, I think this is out of order. Okay, thank you. All right. I move that the town vote to receive the reports of the select board and other town officers, agents, committees, commissions, and boards, including those published in the 2024 Annual Town Report.
Is there a second? Recommendation from the select board?
So the select board decided that we're not going to give you a dog and pony show. We, Bob Stumpel wrote a nice summary of what we've done for the last year. It's in the town report. We have so much else to do tonight. We're gonna abdicate our 10 minutes. Back to you.
And is the select board recommending that we receive the reports?
Yeah, I recommend, we will receive--
All right, recommendation from the FinCon.
FinCon recommends.
Seeing no one at the mic, all in favor of receiving reports, raise your green cards. All opposed, raise your green cards. That passes by a majority. So these are the general state-of-the-town reports. This year, we'll have a total of four. We'll hear from the school committee, the planning board, and the town planner now. The finance committee will be delivering their general report under Article Five. We, we are receiving reports. We're not accepting or approving. There will be no questions or debate on these reports. We're just accepting them. We're gonna hear them. Select board's already decided they'll defer. So first up, we have Acton Boxborough School Committee.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Adam Klein, chairperson of the Acton Boxborough Regional School Committee. I'm honored to present the school district report and FY26 budget this evening. We begin by expressing deep gratitude. Thank you to the dedicated members of the school committee for their tireless work on behalf of our students and schools. A special thank you to Ginny Kramer and Rebecca Wilson as they complete their service on the committee this year. Their support and engagement are what make this work possible. We are concluding our five-year strategic plan. This plan has centered on engaged learning, equitable opportunities and outcomes, social-emotional learning, and inclusive practices. Our ultimate goal has been to foster belonging, strong relationships, and a positive district culture. We'd like to share the tangible impact this strategy has had on our students. We've made strong progress in social-emotional learning. Students are reporting increased access to trusted adults and a stronger sense of safety and support in school. They are better equipped to manage stress, and there's been a meaningful decline in rates of depression, self-harm, and suicidal ideation. Social-emotional learning and mental health are foundational to academic and personal success, and we're proud of the progress we've made. We're also seeing encouraging academic gains. Eighth-grade math scores now exceed pre-pandemic levels. More high school students are enrolling in advanced and AP courses. AP participation has increased nearly 50% since 2020, with no drop in performance. Our science and technology outcomes have also improved. These results reflect the success of our strategic efforts, though we know continued improvement is essential. Later, we'll touch on our plans for the next five-year strategy. Our budget reflects our values. More than numbers, the budget represents our community's commitment to educating every student. That's why this year's budget guideline continues to prioritize a strong, tiered system of supports that meets diverse student needs. We've also approached the FY26 budget with clear financial responsibility. We deeply appreciate the community's support last year, especially the override enacted and Boxborough's increased assessment. In recognition, we limited our operating budget increase to 3% and Boxborough's assessment to no more than 6%. We also avoided using district reserves, excess and deficiency, while still addressing employee obligations and capital maintenance. This budget strives to balance fiscal constraints with student needs and enrollment realities. Let's take a closer look at enrollment. Since regionalization, enrollment has declined by about 600 students, about 10%. Projections indicate a further decline of approximately 330 students over the next eight years. This shift has profound implications for how we plan and resource our schools. We have responded to enrollment declines with staffing adjustments. Over the past decade, we've-- Over the past decade, we've reduced general education classroom teachers by a similar percentage, 31 fewer classroom teachers today compared to 2014. But while enrollment has declined, our student needs have grown. We've seen significant increases in students who are low-income, English learners, students with disabilities, and students whose first language is not English. The proportion of these high-need students has risen by 10%. These students bring great value to our community, but also require additional resources and support. We've responded by expanding in-district supports. To meet increasing needs and keep students in district, we've added 45 specialized staff positions over the past 10 years. Creating in-district programs not only benefits students by keeping them in their home community, it also avoids costly out-of-district tuition expenses. To summarize our enrollment and staffing reality, enrollment is declining and expected to continue slowly decreasing. We've reduced classroom teachers in proportion to that trend. Support staffing has increased to meet the needs of our growing high-need student population, and in-district programs provide essential services while generating cost savings. Now let's turn to the FY26 budget challenge. To simply maintain current services, we projected costs that exceeded the school committee's 3% increase guideline. That left a $1.3 million gap, which required difficult cuts to staffing and therefore services. This is the fourth consecutive year we have had to make such cuts. There is little left to reduce without impacting core student services. We must commit to fully funding our schools moving forward. These cuts are deeply felt and hard to read. Next year's budget reduces staffing by approximately 20 full-time equivalents. Over four years, we've lost over 80 FTEs, nearly 10% of our total staff. We cannot continue along this path. We've also taken proactive steps to improve budget sustainability. Last year, we changed health insurance providers, offered insurance opt-outs for employees, and began rebuilding our reserves. This year, we eliminated the use of reserves entirely, and following the recommendations of our Elementary Budget Task Force, implemented a 25% reduction in general education assistance. Looking ahead, we face ongoing uncertainty. Enrollment is falling, student needs are rising, and operating costs are increasing. Maintaining current service levels will require annual operating increases of 5% to 5.5%. We're grateful to our legislators and community advocates for securing additional funding for FY25 and '26, but state's support still lags behind what's needed for long-term sustainability. We cannot continue cutting school services while the rest of town services remain stable. Our students deserve better. We need a new plan. That plan starts now with a district-wide strategic planning and reorganization effort. Everything is on the table. The reality is, the way we've structured and funded education over the past 50 years is no longer enough to meet the fast-changing needs of today. We're partnering with District Management Group because we believe in our students and our community. Our goal is to build something sustainable that will endure for decades, not just patchwork solutions for another budget cycle. Our ever-changing world demands more from both our students and our graduates. We are committed to ensuring every student has the opportunity to reach their full potential and that our educators have the resources they need to support that goal. At the same time, we also recognize that our community must be able to afford our schools. This isn't just about saving money. It's about being smart with the resources we have. Acton-Boxborough has evolved, and our students need new skills that our current system isn't equipped to provide. That's why we're reimagining how we approach education, rethinking everything from the number of schools and grade configurations to how we match students with the best opportunities for growth. While there's still much to explore, we're excited about the possibilities ahead. We know the strategic planning and restructuring process brings uncertainty, and that can be scary. But we're committed to designing a sustainable and innovative structure that will allow us to rise together and meet the challenges of the next 50 years. We will engage with the community to make sure your voice is heard in the conversation. We can't do this alone. Together, we can shape the future of education and Acton and Boxborough. The final proposed budget for FY26 is $116.8 million. This represents a 2.11% increase over the FY25 budget. The final assessment to the towns is approximately $97 million. The Boxborough share of that assessment is $16.8 million, up 5.41% from FY25. Boxborough's higher share reflects shifting enrollment trends, more Boxborough students and fewer Acton students over the past three years. We have worked hard to contain costs. With the exception of last year, our annual operating budget increase has remained below 3.25% for the past seven years. This reflects a strong commitment by school leaders to align our budget with available community resources. We're grateful for the collaborative partnership with town leadership and look forward to continuing that work. We sincerely appreciate your ongoing support for our schools, our educators, and most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a report from the Planning Board.
Good evening. For the Planning Board report, between May 1, 2024 and May 1, 2025, the Planning Board conducted 22 meetings. Nineteen of those 22 meetings included public hearings, many of which were continued across multiple dates to accommodate legal notice requirements, applicant revisions, and board deliberations. Hearings followed the procedural framework established under Massachusetts General Law and Boxborough's own regulations. Throughout the year, the Board considered a mix of site plan reviews, zoning bylaw updates, special permits, and administrative policy matters. Many meetings involved coordination with staff, consultants, legal counsel, and other town boards. Applicants were regularly asked to revise submissions, attend follow-up sessions, and respond to public feedback. The Board granted at least six formal approvals during the reporting period, including site plan approval with conditions, special permit with, for alternate access, pre-, post-construction stormwater permits, zoning bylaw amendments for cleanup inconsistency, bond releases for completed subdivision work, procedural approvals for future zoning article placeholders. Each approval was based on findings of fact and reviewed for completeness, legal compliance, and alignment with Boxborough's master plan. Deliberations emphasized transparency, public input, and consistency with the zoning bylaws' public purpose and intent. In addition to regulatory actions, the Board contributed to long-term planning efforts, such as housing compliance under the MBTA Communities Act and exploring updates to our zoning bylaws. Members reviewed public survey data, hosted informal information sessions, and worked to identify land use priorities. The Planning Board's work during this period reflects an ongoing commitment to thoughtful planning and growth, effective public engagement, and informed policymaking in support of the town's goals as outlined in our master plan. We are anticipating a very busy year again this year. Several applications for large developments and multiple sites are already in the pending right now. Thank you.
Okay, and next up, our Town Planner and Director of Land Use and Permitting.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the time, Mr. Moderator. I'm here tonight to talk about MBTA communities and how it affects Boxborough. In 2020, under bipartisan leadership, the state passed the MBTA Communities Act, and under Governor Baker's leadership, this was brought forward. The purpose of this law is to ease the ability for multifamily housing to be built across the state of Massachusetts, specifically across 175 towns and cities, those towns and cities that are most directly impacted by rapid transit like the T Station in Acton or in Littleton. As an adjacent small town, which is Boxborough's designation, we have until December of 2025 to create a zoning code that allows for housing development at at least 15 units per acre. For those of you wondering what that technical term means, it looks like Swanson Road. That's what 15 units per acre roundabout looks like here in Boxborough. Because we are an adjacent small town, we have the complete flexibility of where we choose to put this district, and that's something that, over the past year, we have been working to actually understand. Over the past year, we've held a mapping forum, we've worked with an advisory group across several meetings, and we've conducted public input surveys to go along with the mapping exercises. We've developed draft conceptual districts which are available to view on the town website, and we've hosted these meetings in a hybrid or a fully remote system so that the public can fully participate. But the work doesn't stop there. We still have much to do, and through the advisory group, we'll continue to work through these recommendations. I encourage you, the public, to begin informing yourselves using the town website by contacting myself, the Land Use and Permitting Director and Town Planner, and speaking with your fellow elected officials and appointed officials in town, many of whom have begun familiarizing themselves with the process. Following a recommendation from the advisory group, the Planning Board will ultimately launch its public hearings this upcoming summer, as early as the month of June. The purpose of this public hearing, again, is to give you, the public, an opportunity to weigh in on the process and to help us select a location that best meets the needs and desires of the community of Boxborough. In October of this year, we anticipate bringing to all-town meeting this zoning bylaw. This will look different depending on how the Planning Board and the advisory group develop it. This could include room for new growth in the immediate future. It could also include areas that are already constructed in this way, shape, and form. In order to stay informed, I encourage you to follow the website. That QR code will take you there. If you go to the town, the town's website, you'll find further information, and I'll cut myself off there. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes the reports for now. As I, just as a reminder, we will hear from the Finance Committee when we get to Article Five. Motion under Article Three, Select Board.
I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of various selected officials for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 as follows. Select Board members, zero. Border Health members, zero. Town Clerk, $84,298. Constables, $7 per copy or warrant posted. Planning Board members, zero. Regional members of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee, zero. Library Board of Trustees, zero. Town Moderator, zero.
Moved and seconded. Recommendation, Select Board, majority recommendation?
Yes, the majority of the Select Board recommends these compensation rates for the elected officials and for the reasons that are written in the warrant.
Select Board, minority recommendation?
So this is effectively a volunteer position that the state requires us to pay the constables for posting warrants. Every other elected position is taking zero pay, and I don't really know why we need to increase this outside of that because it takes less than 30 minutes. It's six buildings really close by, and you could walk it in under 30 minutes. Additionally, at $3 per warrant, they're still already making above what, if you translate that to an hourly for the 30 minutes of work, that's still high in terms of our classification or the compensation plan.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends this is just based on inflation over several years.
Seeing no one at a microphone, all in favor of the motion on Article Three, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That carries by majority. Okay, Article Four. Please be aware that the motion on Article Four involves two separate items. To make it easier to explain, discuss, and to vote on the motion, there will be two separate motions, discussions, and votes, with one discussion and vote per item listed in the warrant. So do I have a motion on vote one by the Personnel Board?
Alan McLean, are you here? Oh, there you are, sorry.
Might be best to do it from the front, so when the questions come, you're ready to go.
Sure. Alan McLean, the current Chair of the Personnel Board. And so, just read this. Sure, so the first vote we have is on changes to the Personnel Administrative Plan. So I, I move that the town amend certain administrative sections of the Personnel Administrative Plan in the manner that is set forth in the document on file with the Town Clerk titled "Proposed Changes to Personnel Administration Plan" and also available on the town's website as set forth in the May 12, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there a recommendation and/or presentation from the Personnel Board?
The Personnel Board recommends the, the town vote, yes, on this vote.
Okay, recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends unanimously.
Recommendation from the Select Board.
The Select Board recommends.
All right, seeing no one at a microphone, all those in favor of the motion on Article Four, vote one, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That carries by a majority. Okay, motion under vote, Article Four, vote number two, please.
So vote two. I move that the town amend the classification and compensation schedule of the Personnel Administration Plan in the manner that is set forth in the document on file with the Town Clerk titled "Proposed Changes to Personnel Administration Plan" and also available on the town's website as set forth in the May 12, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, which schedule includes a 2.7% wage adjustment as stated in the May 12, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Moved and seconded. For the record, Personnel Board recommendation?
Personnel Board recommends this as a fair wage increase for town employees.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Recommendation from the Select Board.
The Select Board recommends the reasons printed in the warrant.
Seeing no one at the microphone. Oh, we have someone at the microphone from the right. Name and address, please.
Dick Wagman, 86, Leonard Road. I'm looking at this motion, and I'm just trying to understand it, and I admit I'm confused. I didn't, I couldn't find anything that matched what the gentleman said was what we were voting on on vote two, and I'm confused about why we have two separate votes. Can you explain this just generally? I suspect I'm in favor of everything, but I really want to know what's going on.
Alan, please answer.
I can try. So I believe the first vote, we need to vote to make any changes to the text of the Personnel Administration Plan. And so the first vote that we just had pertained to the text of certain provisions within that plan and certain policies that are included. The, the wage increase is not text within the Personnel Administration Plan. I believe it's just a duty of the Personnel Board to make a recommendation to the town that the town then votes on. So it's two separate articles for that reason, is my understanding.
All right, and what about the second part?
So the, the second part, the second vote is on the, the cost of living increase, which is the 2.7% cost of living wage increase that would apply to all-town employees under the, that are.
Okay, so this is, this is where we vote to give him a raise, basically.
Effectively, yes. It's a cost of living wage increase. That is correct.
Didn't say it was crazy, but, okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, could I add something to that?
Yes, please.
So it doesn't actually apply to all employees. The 2.7 applies to all non-union employees who are not under a separate contract. So later, later on this evening, you will vote on the three union collective bargaining agreements. Those have their own cost of living increases in them, and the individual contracts for, for some department heads are also separate. So this applies to non-union, non-contract employees.
Seeing no one at a microphone, all those in favor of the motion on Article Four, vote number two. Raise your green cards, please. Cards down, all those opposed. That passes by majority. Okay, now we're on to Article Five, which is the budget. As the operating budget of the town, Article Five is one of the most important we consider at each town meeting. Please turn to page 37 in your warrant. We will be following our usual practice of considering the budget item by item. And before we start that process, the Finance Committee will make a motion. The Finance Committee will then make, present their report and recommendation. The Select Board will make the recommendation, and then we'll have discussion from the floor as we, as we then follow through going line by line at that point. So motion from the Finance Committee?
So the motion is to see if the town. So the motion is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-nine million, two-hundred ninety-five thousand, one-hundred thirty-two dollars, more or less, the operations and expenses of providing public services for the fiscal year.
Tony, is the motion packet available? That's the warrant. The motion packet is, where it's slightly differently? All right, redo.
Okay. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-nine million, two-hundred ninety-five thousand, and one-hundred and thirty-two dollars for the operations and expenses of providing public services for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, the purposes for which funding are set forth in the department account numbers 114 through 920, and any subheadings included under said account numbers as printed in Article Five of the May 12th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant under the heading FY26 Budget Summary.
Moved and seconded. So we'll now hear the report and recommendation from the Finance Committee. I also, you can refer to the written version of the report, which is printed in the back of the warrant, so all yours, Tony.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there are two parts to this, this presentation. Firstly, I just, I'm going to go over the, the operating budget, the total budget, and all the warrant articles that are in the warrant here and their sources of funding. And then I think there are a number of items that, which sort of arise from that that need discussion. One is the tax levy limits and excess levy capacity. The second thing is use of bonding and debt if town, and the third thing is the use of free cash and our reserves. The other thing I'll just note is that I did update these numbers today based on the vote last night, so there are some changes from what's printed in the, in the warrant in terms of the numbers of the total budget. So firstly, the operating budget, which is twenty-nine million, two-nine-five, one-three-two that we just made a motion on, just to point out some of the big, big items here. Firstly, education is more than half of our operating budget, and that's something that Adam spoke about. We know that education is a, is a big factor in town, and, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in, in, in the next, next section. Other things to point out here is that we have big chunks for employee benefits, insurance, debt servicing, and pensions, largely uncontrollable by us. These are statutory requirements we can't, we can't be totally touch. We have large amounts for public works, protection, town government, very small segments for health services and culture and recreation. So this year, the operating budget increases by 4.6% from last year on the operating budget alone. That's composed of the town budget, the non-education budget going up by 3.45%. On top of that, there are warrant articles in here which we voted on separately, which add an additional two-hundred eighty-five thousand, seven-hundred and thirty-nine dollars. These will be rolled into the operating budget after town meeting, if approved by, by town meeting. So the total increase for the town is 5.6%. Total operating budget increase for town is 5.6%. As noted, some things which are driving these, these budget increases are employee benefits going up by 13.3%, retirement assessment going up by 13%, insurance going up by 13.8%. So quite large numbers, and these are, these are factors that we have no real control. On education, our total education number is going up by 5.6%, mainly driven by the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment, which is going up by 2.11%. Well, so it's on a total budget for Acton-Boxborough, it's going up 2.11%. Our increase is, is more than that because of the changes in enrollment that Adam mentioned. Just to, just to reiterate what Adam has been saying, that, you know, these reflect cuts to level service in the education budget, an additional twenty, twenty and a half FTE reductions this year in, in education. So we, you know, we're fully recognizing that this is a very difficult situation for the education budget, and will continue to increase in, in years to come. Also, we'll note that the non-Acton-Boxborough education number, which is quite small, did increase a lot because this is, this is the vocational schools. These are students who elect to go to Minuteman Tech or other vocational texts. We have no control over that, and this is more expensive than sending, sending those kids to Acton-Boxborough. So the total budget, which includes the operating budget, which is composed of two segments, Acton-Boxborough Regional School District Assessment and the, the non-education, the town budget, which is most of that, and then the warrant articles, which are voted on separately, is thirty-two million, six-hundred and nine thousand, which we have to find sources of funding for. So where does, do those funds come from? So the majority of those funds come from the levy, the property tax that is charged to the town. That's the largest single, single part. We do have sources of funds from some state revenues, from state and elsewhere. We do use reserves for some of those costs, which we'll talk about later, and we can do bonding, which is taking a loan basically for some of those costs. So that has to match, that thirty-two million matches our total needs for funds, has to, has to, has to make a balanced budget. So what you'll see in the warrant is a number of warrant articles, which are called, which are classes raise and appropriate, RNA. They come to a total of two-hundred eighty-five thousand, seven-hundred and thirty-nine dollars. There is articles from bonding. The fire station design fees was in that section, but it's been taken out now. So that means that we have, we're proposing new debt of 1.66 million on top of our existing debt of 5.827 million. And then we have free cash, which we, is, is money that is really in our, in our buffer, typically left over from previous years that we have available. We keep a reserve available for funding certain items in the budget, and there are a number of articles in, in, in the, in the warrant for free cash for a total of seven-hundred ninety-four thousand, five-twenty-six. So when you put it all together, on the left-hand side, you see all of the expenses we have to meet as a town for the year, comes in at thirty-two million dollars, composed of the operating budget and, and the, and all the warrant articles, principally. Then on the right-hand side, our sources of funding, which is some revenues that we have, use of reserves, use of bonding, and then we have what's left, what is left, left in, to, to find is the, we calculate the levy, the taxation, which is twenty-eight million, three-hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy-six cents. That's our estimate for the levy for this year. Also on this slide note, at the bottom, it says levy limit. This is a number we'll, I'll talk about in the next section, which is the amount of money we're allowed to raise in, as a town under the Proposition Two and a Half law. And what you'll see is that we're getting quite close to that levy limit, and we'll talk about that in more detail momentarily. So for the, for this part, we'll talk about the tax levy limit and excess levy capacity, bonding, and, and use of free cash. So first, some definitions. So the levy is the tax we raise, which is real estate property tax. That can be any amount that we elect to, to, to raise up to the levy limit, and we establish, and we reestablish that every year in, in town meeting. The levy limit is based on Proposition Two and a Half, it means, which is, which says that you can raise the levy limits from your previous year by two and a half percent plus any new growth. And then an override is when you decide to raise the levy limits to allow the levy to raise in, in future years. So if we look at Boxborough over the last ten years, what's happened is that the levy limit has actually increased on average by 4.3%. This is the 2.5% plus new growth in town, which has been quite low in, in recent years. So the total increase for the town has been forty-seven percent over ten years. And levy has increased on average 5.5% a year, and this year is actually the same number. So in total, the levy has increased by 60%. So if you look at those two numbers, it's sort of logical that eventually they, they sort of meet. So if, if you, if you, if you should map the, the graph of that and look at the top line, which is the levy limit, the bottom line is the levy, look at the five-year, you know, last four years, and looking forward to the future, these lines get closer and closer together. So we're getting to the point where we need to think about a levy limit increase. Part of the reason for this, need to do this is, is limited in declining new growth. We have one year in 2023 where we had a large amount of new growth. I think that was the enclave coming online, plus some commercial developments, but we've had very low, we have declining new growth in town. So this is really, I think, a shout-out to the Economic Development Board and the Planning Board that we need to increase these, these numbers to actually increase our levy limit through this purpose strategically, I was, I was saying. The plan, I think, forward, you know, which we need to think about is, what do we do about this? So for the levy, we need to keep controlling the levy. We need to, you know, watch our expenses and keep our levy around about that 5% mark, but I don't really think it's realistic to be below that number, based, just based on mandatory costs that we have in town, mandatory increases, increases, including education. And the levy limit, we need to consider, I think, next year, not this, not this year, an operational override to raise the levy limit. So that will give us some long-term flexibility for future levy increases. I would note that the last override in town was twenty, 2006, that's twenty years ago. And, you know, towns have to do this periodically to actually readjust their levy limit. We, we're living in a world where two and a half percent does not, does not reflect reality in terms of increased expenses for all, all the things that we buy as a town. That will be a next year's, a next year's issue. So second issue is, is bonding. So we have existing debt of 5.8 million. Obviously, that incurs servicing costs. We have new debt coming in of 1.66 million. We have to be thinking about a new fire station in the future, so that's going to be, I think, it looks like it's in excess of thirty million dollars. Whatever we do, however we do that, so we need to be thinking about managing our debt, I think, in a way where we have some capacity for future bonding for that, that eventual thing. We look at the debt at the moment, what we have is existing debt in, in the blue there is declining, so we're managing our debt quite well currently, I would say. The new articles that we will vote on tonight will add more debt to that, which will also decline over time, but we have to be thinking about long-term significant increase in debt, I think, for the fire station construction. And then, and then the third thing is use of free cash and impact on reserves. So we have a number of reserves in town that are available to us, that we use for different things, so we, and in particular, free cash, which I want to highlight here, we have a quite a reasonable number right now of 2.3 million in, in free cash. We're using some of this for warrant articles, so, you know, seven-hundred ninety-four thousand dollars for warrant articles. We want to keep that, that balance quite high if we can, because we have obviously issues with budget in the future. So this is really our cushion for the future to try to maintain some flexibility for next year's budgeting actions. So we're thinking sort of long-term here about how to actually manage all these things in, in years to come. So in summary, the, the operating budget will increase by 4.6%. The total increase, if all warrant articles that are raised and appropriate, would be 5.6%, and that will be rolled into the operating budget post ATM. We are facing increasing mandatory costs, including employee benefits, pensions, insurance, that we can't control. We're seeing increasing education costs. We have limitations of Prop Two and a Half. We have limited new growth, so right now, we're operating within, but very close to the levy limit. We will increase debts modestly as a result of this budget, and we have to think about future needs, including fire station, which will, will further increase debt. I'd just like to thank the members of the Finance Committee for their support in, in this endeavor, as we've done this. One, one note to make about the warrant booklet, the articles in there that are listed as raise and appropriate, there's a calculation in there that says this amount, this amount per thousand of property valuation, and then a total amount per average house value. There's a typo in, in each of those. So the amount per, per thousand valuation, where it says 10 cents, it's really 1 cent. It's a, it's a 10, it's a decimal point moved in, in the wrong direction. So you can make a mental adjustment or, or with a pencil in, in your warrants. The, the amount per typical house is actually correct and accurate, so there's a small typo there, just, just a note.
Okay, thank you. Recommendation from the Select Board?
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
Okay, so we're on to the budget. Please, everyone, refer to page 37 in your warrant. Discussion from the floor, as I mentioned, will be by line item. I will read the number and name of each item. If no one comes to a microphone or calls out a hold, we will continue on to the next item. If someone calls a hold, we'll stop and we'll discuss that item before moving on to the next item. Once we've reached the end, I will call for a vote or possibly a revised motion at that point on the entire budget. So if everyone's got page, open to page 37, we will begin. Line item 114, Town Moderator. Line item 119, Town Constable. Line item 123, Town Administrator. Line item 131, Finance Committee. Line 132, Reserve Fund. Line 135, Accountant. Line 141, Assessors. Line 145, Treasurer. Line 151, Legal Department. Line 152, Personnel. Line 155, Information Technology. Line 161, Clerk. Line 171, Conservation Committee, Commission. Line 174, Land Use and Permitting.
Hold, Chad Shoulders, Middle Road. How many, oh, I may not have gotten to the.
Is it point of order or a hold?
I think, I think it's on the next one. How many employees for, for line 174?
All right, we're on line 174, Land Use and Permitting.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a hole we will stop and discuss, line 174. Question again, name and address, please.
Chad Shoulders, 150 Middle Road. How many employees are accounted in that?
Mike, do you have it, or perhaps Alec? Let me do a quick finger count. If I don't have it by the time Alec gets here.
Love fast, Alec.
One, two, three, four.
Six, including a minutes taker.
All right, question, microphone to my right. Oh, waiting, okay. All right, we're done with 174. Line 175, Planning Board.
Hold, please.
All right, microphone to my right, name and address.
Rebecca Werner, 601 Old Harvard Road. Forgive me, I don't have this information directly at my fingertips, and my memory has maybe, is not holding with me right now. I've also asked Alec, but he doesn't have access to internet, unfortunately, so I'm going to ask FinCom if they could speak to the reduction on that from last year.
This is the budget that was sent to us by the planner, and we approved.
Do we have a breakdown of, of the items that changed? I see Alec coming up.
All right, I'll see if Alec can perhaps answer that one.
Consulting went down.
So I, I do want to offer clarification, so I would agree it's a reduction in the consulting, but when I submitted it, I submitted a level funding consulting budget.
That's what we got from the town, from the town administrator and the finance team.
I don't recall cutting that budget at all. I don't recall cutting that budget at all. All right, questions been asked and answered with some.
So our Finance Director is, is pulling up the notes in ClearGov, our budgeting software, to see whether that change was made.
Yeah, we have it here in ClearGov as well. It's, it's changed in ClearGov. Yeah, what we have is correct for ClearGov.
Right, she's just checking.
And we, and we don't control ClearGov. So, you know, ClearGov is, just so everyone knows, ClearGov is the town accounting software where they submit all the budgets. So we can extract information from ClearGov. We don't, we can't change information in ClearGov. So we take what's in there as, as the correct number.
So there are no notes on there why that was reduced. It does show that it was reduced in ClearGov. I would recommend there be an amendment to, to bring it up to the, the amount if the, if the land use director.
I know that the Planning Board did strike some travel expenses from that, so it did come down from last year. We had some travel expenses that everything's going online now, so we, we thought that was unnecessary. So I think it was $400 or $500 that it came down from last year, but. That's a different line.
The Land Use Director, and I agree that it would be appropriate to amend this up to the amount that he believes he put into the budget.
Is that $7,500?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not, I can't make that amendment.
I would suggest either someone from the Planning Board or the Finance Committee make this recommendation.
I'll make a motion to amend line 175 for Planning Board to change it from $7,942 to $7,500.
Oh, you.
What?
It's currently 3,400. You want to increase it to 74, 500?
What? I'm so sorry. Some, oh, I'm, I'm very sorry. Okay, yes, from 3,400. Okay, motion to amend line 175, Planning Board, from 3,400 to 7,500.
I just note that that money was not spent last year, what's this year? So you, you're asking for money to be, you know, to be taxed to gain that wasn't spent last year.
Tony, we're about to make a motion that you can make a recommendation after there's a motion on the floor. Okay, so it's been, all right, just to be clear, it's been moved and seconded to increase line 175, Planning Board, from $3,400 to $7,500. Recommendation from the Select Board.
Of course, we haven't had a chance to vote it.
And you can have no opinion if you have no time to.
We have no opinion yet, but we are supportive of the Planning Board, so present your case.
All right, and the FinCom is deliberating a recommendation. I'll wait for them. Recommendation from the Planning Board?
We would recommend this, this amendment.
All right, I, I see you looking at your Planning Board members there, thank you. Whenever the FinCom's ready to make a recommendation.
We do not recommend.
All right, discussion from the floor. Rebecca, you made the motion, so you can explain.
I don't have an exact number, but I do want to point out that the Planning Board did use some of these funding. Maybe, maybe Planner, Alec, you can speak to what we did use for some of this, this funding.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, please go ahead.
So this year alone, the Planning Board has engaged legal services to ask technical legal questions. They are waiting to use a portion of the budget to supplement the ongoing traffic study that was approved by Town Meeting. They're using their own budget to increase the capacity of use from the consultant on that. And further, the board in the past has used their funding to engage professional consultants to consider new legislation.
Can I respond to that? Can I respond?
To clarify, the budget expenditure?
Yeah, so you're talking about legal fees, which are different to consulting. No consulting's been spent at all, and separate things that were passed as a warrant article are separate items. So you can't just, you know, move money like that around. So consulting, looking at the ClearGov data, there's no money being spent at all in consulting.
Okay, well, I can't speak to why ClearGov, but the board has specifically expended funds this year to go towards a legal opinion that was provided in their review of STM Article 1.
It's a legal, it's a legal line, though, right?
But that was budgeted out of their accounts, because it was separate from the legal review that was done by the town.
Microphone to my left.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. To Tony's earlier comment, do we have a number on the actuals for that specific budget line for FY '25?
Yes, we do, zero.
So. It seems to be a apples and oranges concern here, because Alex is taking the position that the legal for STM 1 was taken out of the consultant line?
Specifically, the legal opinion that the board sought from its own independent special land use council, yes.
The, no, so can you confirm, Hongwa, that the, that these expenditures in consulting are zero?
Yes, zero.
Yeah.
So.
So I understand, to, to channel someone that we love very much, I support my FinCom only because if, and, and you may have provided a rationale about why your submitted 75 was. However, I also understand the FinCom's concern if the, the, what, what was the FY '25 consulting line?
75,000.
7,500.
7,500, sorry.
If that wasn't expended, I can understand the FinCom's concern about if you didn't spend 75 last year, the, why they would feel they could reduce it down, unless you had an imperative about something that was coming forward in '26 that you needed support for.
We are seeing unprecedented numbers of applications of things that we've never seen in this community before. I think that we need a budget to be able to, you know, bring in specialists or consultants in order to navigate these, these applications. I mean, we've not seen developments like they're coming across our plate right now. If we need a traffic consultant, that's where our money's going to come from. If we need an environmental assessment, that's where our money comes from. We asked for 70, what is it, last year, 7942, and we've brought that number down from last year. We don't know what is on the horizon and what kind of special, this kind of information we're going to need. I mean, we have a very smart planning board, but we don't know what we don't know. And just having the ability to bring people in that can speak to whatever specific item it might be, and we, you know, it's kind of an unknown until those applications come across our table.
So my concern then, and again, we're, we're trying to figure this out on Town Meeting floor, and I apologize. Actuals impact what numbers FinCom can justify in a budget. So if someone has the data on how much of the consulting line the planning or land use has used in, we'll use the three-year metric. I, I'm just, again, trying to be fiscally cognizant of what's happening. Thank you.
Okay.
Alec, one quick question. Have we gotten the legal bills yet?
From the, the special opinion? Yes, we have received the legal bill, yes.
Okay, I think we had someone waiting at the microphone to the right first, before I'll go back to the left. Name and address?
Yeah, sure, Chris Dowdy, 560 Liberty Square. So I'm not seeing a compelling reason for dropping the, the budget, or that there was an intent to dramatically decrease the budget. There seemed to be a lot of confusion about why it went from almost 8K to half that. And if the reduction was about $450, and it actually reduced by $4,500, that smells a little bit like a typo earlier, that the FinCom let us know that there was a decimal moved. So I don't think there was an intention to cut the budget, and especially given Article 1 last night failed, I think the Planning Board is going to have some work to do, and probably going to have to bring in some opinions and consultants to get, you know, other official opinions from professionals. So I think it's perfectly reasonable to just, you know, go basically with level funding with what they asked for last year. If they're officially asking for slightly less than that, that feels perfectly reasonable to me.
No. Okay, you, you all set?
Yeah.
Microphone to my left.
Kristen Hilberg, 1112 Hill Road, also speaking as a, as a Select Board member, not the opinion of the board, because I haven't talked to them. I, I support level funding this budget, and the reason being is they do have a lot to do this coming year. I understand you're saying that they didn't spend it. ClearGov isn't noting any expenditures. It could have been mischaracterized, because I also trust when Alec is saying, yes, we did spend money. So I think there's some disconnect there. Level funding makes sense to me, because they have a lot to do. If they run out of their $3,400, they're going to have to come back to the FinCom for a reserve fund transfer. That takes time, and they've got hearings, they've got deadlines, they've got applicants trying to get their jobs done. They're trying to do their job. So because of a little bit of the confusion that's going on about was it spent, where was it spent, how is it spent, I, I just think we need to keep the business of the town going. And then if we slow it down by making the Planning Board come and ask for a reserve fund transfer, we're only hurting ourselves. And it's also a small amount of money. Again, with all due respect, everybody's saying we're trying to keep our taxes down and take care of this. It's a small amount of money.
Microphone to my right, name and address.
Mark Barbadoro, 627 Old Harvard Road. The Planning Board does need an operating budget. They have statutory deadlines that they need to meet, and they have consultants that they need to hire. And this number isn't, it, it isn't stable. It fluctuates depending upon what's thrown at the Planning Board. So if you're looking for new, regular new growth, then I would advise you to fund the Planning Board so that they can get the consulting that they need in order to achieve the goals that you're trying to give to them. Thanks.
Microphone to my left, name and address, please.
Erin Harrington, Kendall Road, 88 Kendall Road. I actually have a question. Does the Planning Board?
Can you step up to the mic a little closer?
Would the Planning Board be handling the new accessory dwelling units that are going to be talked about later?
Yeah, that's a separate article.
I'm just saying that they're handling it. That's additional stuff for them to handle. As a homeowner with aging parents, a lot of us are going to be interested in that, and we would like the Planning Board to be able to handle it in a timely manner. So I think they should be funded. Thank you.
Microphone to my right, please.
Cindy Mark, with 99 Meadow Lane, member of the Planning Board. That just prompted me to recollect that recently we did get some free legal advice from the Attorney General's Office on the accessory dwelling unit bylaw that will be coming to you as part of this Town Meeting. We also had voted internally to do some work on a hazardous waste and commercial dump issue. That issue had resolved itself after the board had voted to expend monies to get some opinion on that. There are many technical issues that we deal with, as Rebecca alluded to, and we do rely on experts in certain areas when applicants come to us that we may need. So I urge Town Meeting to please support the level funded Planning Board, or they requested funding for Planning Board of 7,500. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one at the microphone, this is an amendment specific to line 175, Planning Board. The motion is to increase it from 3,400 to 7,500. All those in favor, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That carries by majority. Line 176, Zoning Board. Line 179, Agricultural Commission. Line 182, Economic Development. Line 192, Building and Maintenance. Point of order. Do you want us, want to grab the microphone, please, so we can hear you?
I know they think it was supposed to be, because this is all total salary and non-salary, and we have it broken down, and we're trying to make sure we, you know, make the motion correctly at the end of the meeting. And so they've got down, it's $3,400, it said last year it was 7,900. What we have for consulting is 3,000, and then there's a $400 other expenses. So it, I guess I, I'm confused if we actually are going to do 7,500 for consulting, that's fine, but it's just, it's not going, it's going to be like 70.
Becky, all we see in the warrant on page 37 is a non-salary amount.
I know, so I just, I don't know that, like, how, where we put it. It is an other.
So we moved 7,500 non-salary.
So we're trying to make consulting 7,500, is that correct? Well, it was 7,500 last year. No, there's still another 400 for the other.
So this isn't in the warrant. This is a Finance Committee line item minutia.
Well, the Finance Committee didn't make this change to begin with. So we're just trying to make sure we get it correct, so that when we make the motion at the end of Article 5, it's correct.
Do you have a recommendation that would clarify the breakdown?
Well, so I think it should probably be 7,900 for a total, and not 7,500 for a total. Because it's 7,500 for consulting and 400 for other expenditures. No, you had travel, but this is different. This is other, you've got 442 for travel, which we took out, and now there's 400 for other expenses. So 7,900 would be the total amount. Okay, so then that would mean it would be 7,100 for consultants and 400 for total other. I just, is that what you want? Well, that's why I think it's 71.
Becky, this, this is accounting of, of 7,500 of non-salary, which has just passed by the vote we just took.
Okay, so then that's fine, that can be 7,100 and another 400 for whatever else they need.
So how it gets broken down, I would.
You don't care.
Suggest that's the discretion of the accountant, the Finance Committee, whoever has to manage that money. Unless there's an interest in making a new motion for some reason. But I have to say, the warrant has two categories, non-salary and salary, and we just amended it and voted on 7,500 in non-salary. How it's broken down is not a matter for Town Meeting.
Could we offer some clarification from our perspective?
Yeah, please, clarification? So we're all informed?
So the motion by the acting Planning Board Chair, Clerk of the Planning Board, was to bring it up to 7,500 flat. Both line items within the department budget are expense accounts. So regardless of where the line goes, if funding were to run short in one of the two accounts, we could conduct a line-to-line transfer quite quickly and quite easily to respond to the needs of the board.
I believe this can be resolved as an accounting issue. We're going to move on. I think I left off with line 192, Building and Maintenance. Line 196, Facilities. Line 199, Sustainability Committee. Line 199, Sustainability Committee. Line 210, Police. Flipping to page 38, we have line 215, Dispatch. Line 220, Fire. Line 292, Animal Control. Line 300, Education. Line 310, Regional School. Line 422, Public Works Maintenance. Line 423, Public Works Snow and Ice. Line 424, Public Works Street Lighting. Line 429, Public Works Fuel. Line 431, Public Works Hazardous Waste. Line 433, Public Works Transfer Station. Line 490, Animal Inspector. Line 491, Cemetery. Line 511, Board of Health. Line 529, Community Services. That's a hold on line 529, Community Services? Yes, in a loud voice. You can go to the microphone and ask a question, make a comment.
So I'm in a dilemma. I'm in a chicken-and-egg dilemma. I'm sorry. Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. We have a article coming up under Community Services to increase hours for the Coordinator. I just would like to know, and I, again, if I'm getting ahead of myself, the problem is, is we're voting the money now. Why was the support person taken out of Community Services Department? And how, what was, why was the decision made to take office support away from this particular position?
Michael, can you answer?
I can. When I arrived here, I had 12 direct reports, plus the Library Director and the Town Clerk, who are not my direct reports, but department heads that I work directly with. That span of control was far too wide. In an effort to make effective management, I have consolidated some departments. One of those departments is Human Services. Under Human Services, there's Community Services, there's Council on Aging, there's Veteran Services, where we have an arrangement with acting a shared Veteran Service Officer, and Recreation. Along with that effort, I moved the administrative support into one budget line. That is in Recreation. So later in the budget, you'll see that the salary for Recreation has gone up, whereas in Council on Aging and Community Services has gone down. And that's the reason you see a reduction here. So we haven't, so that's the reason. And does that answer your question?
No, it, and again, I'm, it's chicken and egg here. I'm trying to figure out why the support hours were pulled from the Community Service Responsibilities.
Sure, I can answer that. It is getting ahead to a later thing, but it may be appropriate to answer it now.
Stick within these four corners here, that's fine.
So what is needed in Community Services is a greater outreach and greater ability to get people back to work when they are able. Administrative support in that office does not lend itself towards that effort. So later in the evening, when we talk about increased hour for the Community Service Coordinator, that's what's needed, is someone who can do outside of the office work in helping people who are in need, whether it's through a disability, through a temporary work outage, through an illness, injury, or what have you, have complications with getting back to work. This outreach worker is, you know, spends a lot of time helping people with transportation, helping people with childcare, helping people with getting the work skills and education they need to get back to work, becoming a more productive member of the community. And that's why what is needed here is more Community Service Coordinator hours and not administrative support in the office. That's the reason it was taken away.
Thank you. I might have a follow-up on 630, but that answers the question for now.
Okay. Seeing no one else or hearing other holds, we'll move on to line item 541, Council on Aging. Is that a hold?
Yes.
Okay, line 541, Council on Aging. Name and address, please.
Mr. Moderator, Santhoshwarma, 160 D Po Road, Bucksboro. More than 30% of Bucksboro adults are older adults, and we expect that population is aging, and we want people to age in place. And so I am, I want to know, like, why our, the budget is going down from 2025 to 2026? And I know some of this is moving to the, as you said, to the Recreation Commission, but I want to make sure that cumulatively, we are having more resources available to our older adults and not less.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, similar to the answer to the last question. So we're not reducing services in that department or public services to our seniors. We're actually looking to maximize and create better services for our seniors through this consolidation. In, within the past year, the Council on Aging Director was promoted to Human Services Director, and also works with someone in the office who's providing, you know, administrative support. Again, that is something that the Human Services Director, also our Council on Aging Director, and I are monitoring very closely to make sure that none of the services in any of the four areas that Human Services, you know, delivers services to, decrease. And we're monitoring that closely. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on to line 543, Veterans. Line 610, Library. Line 630, Recreation Commission. Line 691, Historical Commission. Line 692, Public Celebration. Flipping to page 39, we have line 699, A B Cultural Council. Line 710, Retirement of Debt. Line 751, Interest on Long-Term Debt. Line 911, Retirement Assessment. Line 912, Town Insurances.
Hold.
Hold on line 912, Town Insurances. Name and address, please.
Jennifer Barrett, 55 Woodcombe Road. I'd like to know specifically what lines 912, 913, 914, 920 are to differentiate them, as well as 915, 916, and 919. I figured I would ask all at once.
Yeah, that's fair, if we want to consider them, if there's some overlapping breakdown here.
I can give you a breakdown of what those are, if you like.
Yeah, please do.
So line 912 is workers' comp and injured-on-duty coverage through our insurance provider. Line 913 is unemployment. Line 914 is health insurance. Line 915 is long-term disability insurance. 916 is Medicare. 9, excuse me, line 919 is flexible spending. And line 920 is town liability insurance.
Thank you. Can you-
Yeah.
Can you please tell us what the year-to-date and past actuals were for line 913?
All right, we're on line 912 now, so if, are we fine with line 912? Any other questions on line 12? Okay, line 913, we have a question.
Could you tell us the actuals and the year-to-date, actuals for FY24 and year-to-date expenditures on line 913?
Okay, so nine, line 913 for FY24, we expend $4,981.12. And then for this year, for line 913 and FY25, we expended $14,250.67.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing more on 913. Line 914, Town Insurances. Line 915, Employee Benefits. Line 916, Employee Benefits. Line 919, Employee Benefits. And line 920, Town Insurances. That brings us to the end of the budget. I will wait for the Finance Committee to make a revised motion on the budget with the change that we had voted on. So I'll give you a second to get the right number.
Mr. Moderator, is there a point where we could ask a question on information in the Finance Committee's report?
We're talking about the budget now, so yes, as a point of order, if you have a question, yes, now would be appropriate.
In the Finance Committee report, there was a table, and he showed it on the screen, that shows the roll-up of the total budget to the total levy included in that table.
Is there a page you're referring to in the warrant for everybody to see?
Yes, I'm pointing it here. It was slide 11, I believe, if that helps. And it's page 106 in the warrant.
Can we get that up on the screen? There we go. Upper table, lower table?
Upper table, upper left. We have breakdown of the ABRSD bud, non-ABRSD budget, the regional budget for a total, and that's the total that we're revising in the moment. Below that, there are other costs and overlay reserve fund. Those total up as part of our levy. Could you please identify what is other costs?
Yes, that is, there's an amount in there for the overlay reserve allowance, and there are cherry sheet charges in there as well.
Okay, so we have overlay in other costs, as well as a separate line for overlay reserve?
Yes, it's been brought to our attention by members of the public that there was a question about the overlay reserve allowance, and I'm currently investigating that. That was within the last day or two that I found that out, so I haven't had a chance to actually amend anything in here yet. So we will be investigating that further.
Okay. And just to, as a point of note to the residents, this is taxed money. This is money that we put aside that is not voted as part of our budget, so having accuracy here is helpful. The state acknowledges and certifies this number as part of the levy when they do the tax recap. And in the last several years, we have come nowhere near $400,000, although we have raised $400,000. Another slide in the Finance Committee report showed we have $1.4 million sitting in overlay. That's waiting for tax abatements.
So we are looking into the overlay reserve fund, and whether that's an appropriate number. That, the overlay reserve fund is set by the Town Assessor, and we don't control that. We can only look at that, so we are doing that. In fact, the tax calculation would be done after all that's been looked at and actually revised. So whatever we decide here on this town floor won't change the tax levy based on that number, whether it's correct or not correct.
Thank you.
Okay, waiting on the revised motion from the Finance Committee whenever you are ready. Cindy, do you have a question or a point of order? Are you waiting for the next article?
I have a question on Article Five for the FinCom. I don't know if it is now the time. I thought they're doing some research.
Before we get to a motion, if there's a question on the budget, if it's one of these line items, we've already gone past it, though. If it's something in the report-
I didn't see it as a line item, so-
Fair enough. Fire away.
Yeah, my question is, can someone tell us how much in real estate abatements the town has given in this past fiscal year?
Question for the assessor, I think.
Does it show up somewhere in the budget as a-
It does not show in the budget.
Kelly, are you here, Kelly, the assessor?
All right.
Thank you, Kelly.
We may have an answer.
I do not have the abatement numbers tonight, no.
Okay, can I stop by your office and get that information?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good to go for a motion on the budget, revised motion on the budget.
Okay, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,295,132 for the operations and expenses of providing public services-
You need to read the motion packet and the new number. Is that the motion packet? Oh, you need the new number. All right, that's the motion packet. Do you have the new number?
We do.
Okay. Okay, with the exception of, okay, I'm sorry.
For the purpose for which funding are set forth in department account numbers 114 through 920, and any subheadings including under said account numbers to, as printed in Article Five of the May 12, 225 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, underheading FY26 Budget Summary, with the exception of planning other, 175, which where we add $4,100 for a total operating budget of $29,299,232,232.
Moved and seconded. Recommendation from the Select Board.
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
And for the record, the Finance Committee recommends, recommendation?
Recommends.
Recommends. All in favor of the motion on Article Five as amended, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed. That motion carries by majority. Motion under Article Six, Select Board.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,002 to support an increase in the hours of, and provide related compensation to the Community Service Coordinator.
Recommendation, moved and seconded. Recommendation from the Select Board?
The Select Board- The Select Board recommends 500. The Select Board recommends this article unanimously for the reasons shown above, as well as the fact that the Select Board has become aware of a growing number of residents needing assistance due to economic and financial difficulties. These hours will be used by the CSC only to give residents the tools and direct access to local agencies that can offer real, personal help to our fellow residents who are going through difficult times. The Coordinator has the tools and the knowledge to help these people. She just needs more time. 10 hours, going from 25 hours currently to 35 hours per week to meet with these residents so that they can see there are resources that they can benefit from.
Finance Committee, majority opinion, recommendation?
The majority of the Finance Committee recommends, and while we're concerned about the continual creep of additional positions and hours, we feel the additional hours are needed to serve the residents of the town. needed to serve the residents of the town.
Finance Committee, minority recommendation?
The minority believes the town should pause staffing increases this year. Over the last several years, the town has added staff and/or staffing hours, while the school has been forced to make significant staff cuts. In addition, within the next few years, the town's pension obligation is predicted to become the largest budget driver, second only to the schools. This model is unsustainable in the long term.
Council on Aging, recommendation?
Santoshwarma, 160 Depot Road, representing Council of Aging. Council of Aging Board unanimously recommends approval of this article. Council of Aging Board believes that restoring 10 hours of community services staff time, thereby extending coordinated hours, will greatly enhance Baxborough's support of older members of the community, noting that more than 30% of Baxborough residents are over the age of 60. A critical function of community services coordinated position is connecting those in need of financial and other assistance to external resources that provide such support to older individuals, as well as to other people. Restoring these hours to Town Community Services Department will significantly increase Baxborough's ability to support and enhance the lives of our older citizens.
Okay, recommendation from the Well-being Committee?
Mary Pavlik, 34 Middle Road. The Well-being Committee recommends that we have a short presentation if there is time for us to talk directly to this position.
If there are questions, it's a recommendation? Yeah, if there's questions, we can go to the presentation.
Okay. If there, if there, there have been questions about this position. I am more than happy to speak to the position that deals with the neediest people in this town. We have testimonials from people that have been helped, and the shifting of the hours specifically removes 10 hours that were in administrative support and replaces it with the expertise of the community services coordinator.
Seeing no one at a microphone, all in favor, raise your green, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right.
Adam Klein, 85 Whitcomb Road. I can in good conscience vote to raise and appropriate, which means tax our town more for this service, when, as we've heard, we've cut services for other very needy people in our community, which are our students. So as we see these raise and appropriate articles come up, each one of those will increase the level of service that the town is providing to a portion of their community. And as we've heard, over the past four years, we have made significant cuts to our students, who, by the way, can't come here and vote in favor of that. So I'm speaking on their behalf to say that we cannot continue to raise and appropriate and add services to the town for a portion of that community when we are cutting services for another portion. Thank you.
All right, next at the microphone?
Kristen Hillberg, 1112 Hill Road, and member of the Select Board. The Board talked about this at length. We agree with all the recommendations that we need to take care of our own. We have a significant percentage of our population that is older. They receive significantly less services in the school. And please don't think I'm anti-school, because I am anti, no, I'm not. Whoa, okay, okay. No, I am 100% pro-school, and I understand what Adam's saying. I completely understand that they're feeling the pressure of cuts every year. But this, again, we, we need to serve the people of our town. As federal funds are cut, as state funds are infringed upon, we need to take care of our own. And the Select Board felt very strongly that this is a good use of our money, our taxpayer dollars, because for every dollar that we're spending to support people, we're helping them stay in town, we're helping them stay in their homes, we're helping them have access to transportation, all of those things that otherwise they would not receive from the state or the federal government. So thank you to all of you guys that do that, that volunteer, that are paid, and we support this.
Microphone to my left, please.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. As much as I've been cheerleading the FinCom about cost savings tonight, I had the honor of working, Wendy was going, coming in as I was leaving town service, but I had the honor of working with our previous community services coordinators, and it's a big lift. I also want to say to Adam's concerns, children in our community are serviced by the coordinator. One of the things that they have been doing over the past 10 years is putting together backpacks for these disenfranchised families. They also provide food, like snack packs, for families that have school-aged children. So I understand that you feel that services are being lost at the school level. However, these kids also exist outside of the school, and they need support outside of the school community. And it would be awesome if the school could perhaps coordinate with our community service coordinator and see if there's needs for the school-aged children that our community can provide with the cuts that are currently occurring at the school. I think it could be a win-win cooperative situation if you'd consider that. Thank you.
Mary Pavlik, 34 Middle Road. I'm a retired Blanchard School teacher, so Adam, I've sat on school council with you. I absolutely understand and am personally devastated by the cuts that have had to come to the school. I also understand that when you made those decisions, you also made cuts here and not here. And within our community, if we have to make cuts in any place, this is not the place to make the cut. We are continuing hearing, now we're talking about possible Medicare cuts, Medicaid cuts. This is the person who takes care of the seniors in the community. This is the person who essentially, we're restoring hours. This position has been in flux, more hours, less hours, because it is very difficult to get the right person in a part-time position who has the skillset to take care of our community. This person is here. This position is finally in a place where we are helping more and more and more of the people in our community. We need this person. We need this position. If I could advocate for more hours, I would, but we didn't. We kept it. We essentially switched an admin for the hours of the community services provider. That's all we've done. I can read you our recommendation here, but I just can't emphasize enough, as a person who cares deeply about school, that this is the other position that I care deeply about.
Microphone to my left, please.
Chad Childers, 150 Middle Road. I, I just want to speak in, in support of this. I know the state has made cuts this year, and, you know, we've had to step up partially from the Minutemen, and I have seen the, the need, and, and just want to support. Thank you.
Seeing, are you coming to the microphone? All right, name and address, please.
Fred in Spain, 90 Summer Road, part of the Well-being Committee. Wendy runs the holiday gift program, helps families with getting food stamps. She works closely with the school department. It's a well-needed service for the kids in this community. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else approaching a microphone, all in favor of the motion under Article 6, raise your green cards. Okay, cards down, all opposed. That motion carries. Motion under Article 7, Select Board, please.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to hire and compensate part-time transfer station attendant 16 hours per week for the Department of Public Works.
So second. Moved and seconded. Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board recommends 5 to 0 for the reasons printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee, majority recommendation?
The majority of the Finance Committee recommends for all the reasons in the warrant.
Finance Committee, minority recommendation?
The minority believes that the town should pause staffing and increase this year. Over the last several years, the town has added staff and/or staffing hours, while the schools have been forced to make significant cuts. In addition, within the next few years, the town pension obligation is predicted to become the largest budget driver, second only to the schools. This model is unsustainable for the long term.
Microphone to my right.
Hi, Adam Klein, 85 Whitcomb Road. Yet again, raise and appropriate, which means that we are adding to the town budget, which means that we're adding services for the town at the point that we're cutting services four years in a row. I will just add that in the Finance Committee's presentation, if we vote to approve every one of these raise and appropriate budgets, our town budget will have gone up by five-plus percent this year. The town's operating budget will go up by 5%. The school's budget has only gone up, an operating budget has only gone up this year 2.11%. So more than double percentage-wise of an increase in the town budget if we vote for all of these. At some point, we have to start restoring services to the schools, and we have to understand that we need to balance the needs of all of the community members, including our students. Thank you.
Approaching the microphone to my left, name and address.
Jennifer Buntstone, 221 Sergeant Road. If you go to the transfer station, you might recognize me. I'm the one who's usually running, stopping people from throwing things in the wrong dumpster and what have you. Although it seems like, why would we throw another person, the fact that we have sort of had to switch over a person who had been able to help and assist our, our town members in not screwing up, not putting, like, it's, it's galling. Like, it says metal, and people are throwing, like, huge plastic things in. But people don't seem to realize that we actually make money from the metal recycling. But if there's too much not-metal stuff in it, they're, they're not going to accept it. Also, having somebody keeping an eye, making sure that people aren't accidentally depositing pressure-treated wood, or people who might not be townies, but somehow regularly might come with building materials, that, there, there are things that it, it could defray costs, in addition to also just making up for the hours lost by transport of driving to North Attleboro to bring both the waste and the recycling. That's it. Thanks.
Seeing no one else at or approaching, oh, microphone to my left again.
Is, is Richard Garrison here? Could Sustainability talk to this?
Does anyone from Sustainability care to comment?
Chad Childers, 150 Middle Road. I'm just wondering if...
I think that's an affirmative, if I see someone scurrying to a mic here.
I'm just wondering if Sustainability has considered, or has an opinion and is considered doing volunteers for this, because I know Sustainability does volunteers for other things.
Yep, I really appreciate the question. So this is, I'm Kate Davies, 72 Guggins Lane, the Chair of the Sustainability Committee. And we are working very hard on the waste management issue. Actually, we have a working group that is split across several committees in the town. We've got a member from the Select Board and the FinCom, from the Well-being Committee, and a couple of members from the Sustainability Committee who are working to help the town reduce the amount of waste that is actually disposed of, and hopefully that will help us to save on some of these costs. So, great question. Happy to chat more later.
Mr. Moderator, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you.
No one else at a microphone?
I, well, I think the only question I would have is, I would want some input from Ed on whether there would be any liability, having volunteers managing what gets thrown there, because the Select Board does worry. First of all, we appreciate your efforts. I want you to know, I think it's amazing you do that. We used to have an all-volunteer recycling committee, and we literally hand-sorted dirty stuff on tables to make sure it went to the right place. So I feel you. Thank you. But when I put my Select Board hat on, I worry about people being cruel to you. Maybe you getting hurt, maybe, you know, I want to make sure, maybe from Ed's perspective, of what's safe and what's not safe to have his volunteers at the transfer station, and if we're better served having paid people with appropriate responsibilities and insurance.
Okay, seeing no one else at a microphone. Do you want to, is that a direct question you'd like an answer to?
I was asking Ed if he could respond to the idea of volunteers, or whether we should be hiring people.
Okay, specific question. Thank you, Ed.
I rambled. Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I want to, I guess I should clarify what this position is for. I do agree with the resident who spoke about staff not being able to check on what people are throwing away, because somebody has to be in that little building in order to press buttons, so the compactors get pressed, so people can continue to throw the, the trash and recyclers in there. And they, Larry is amazing. He does his best to try to keep people from tossing or throwing things in the wrong dumpsters, or throwing things that shouldn't be in there. But he is one person who goes out of his way to help anybody there if they need it. And when he does that, he's taken, you know, away the duties of the, what he's really there for, to kind of patrol. He's also there, along with, with Zach, to check to make sure people have stickers. We've gone over this with the town administrator about how we can rectify this, because we're having trouble keeping some people from entering the transfer station when they don't have stickers, where we've actually thought about putting in some type of monitor at the gate. Not a person, but something that you're going to scan to show, and it's going to come up on a screen to show that. Because even though it's minimal, at $150 a year, it does cost the town money, because obviously the other people who are actually paying for it are paying for this person to throw their trash away and then have it taken up to either whale-liverator or wind-waste to be disposed of. But to get to my point, the reason we're looking for a part-time employee up there is not for an additional staff person to help Larry and Zach. Back in 2021, the cost of having waste management truck our waste and our recycling up to the two facilities was averaging about $430 a trip, per trip, not for the day. But every time they picked up one of our dumpsters at the transfer station, it was costing the town between recycling and, and the, the waste, $438 per trip. And I don't know if, if Rajan can put up a, one of my slides that show what it was costing us to do this. But as he's doing that, I'll, I came to a decision that maybe we should be doing it ourselves. I know the truck was expensive, and it did cost the town $175,000. I brought it to the boards, and we all agreed that doing this would save the town money, even with Larry running that truck back and forth on his days that he's not working on the transfer station. So I did a breakdown in the, in the four years of what it was saving the town, and at the bottom line there, I know you probably can't read it, but it averages about $40,000 to $45,000 somewhere yearly. And that's with the increase of Larry's pay, whatever, whatever that need is. But every year, waste management was increasing on average 5% for their hauls. So it was kind of offsetting what Larry was getting for his pay in order to do this. So a decision was made for the town to actually go ahead and purchase the vehicle and, and do our own hauling. And with the savings, that truck was paid off in a little over a year and a half by doing this and saving the town money from that day on, after that truck was paid off. But unfortunately, there was an unintended consequence. If you're not aware, the, the transfer station attendants do work five days a week, three days for the, for the DPW and two days there. So we only have, we, we don't have them for full-time for the, for the five days at the transfer station, I mean, at the DPW. So when Larry started hauling on his days, on the days he wasn't working at the transfer station, I lost an employee who was providing anything that we needed to do at, at the DPW, and a lot of it was mowing, was, was anything that was actually needed. And I said, you know, this isn't, this is tough now. We're down one employee, and I can't provide the services that I was, I was previously providing at that time. And to go along with that, not only was I, I losing him there, but two years, a little over two years ago... but, um, two ye, a little over two years ago, uh, the former, uh, town administrator decided that the town should have a Buildings and Grounds Foreman, someone that actually should take care of the buildings, um, and look after their maintenance, because it is one of the biggest, um, as, ownerships that the town has, along with the roads. So the position was, um, created, and one of my employees took over the, over the position, and he's, he's fantastic. If you've ever met Fran, and I know some of you probably haven't, but a lot of the town employees know him, and he is extremely intelligent, has worked in the field with these types of equipment that he, that he oversees and has to maintain, or have a contractor come in and help, um, maintain the equipment. At first, the town administrator thought that it'd be a 20-hour position, and, and the other 20 hours would be spent, um, staying, working at the DPW with, you know, mowing, um, maintaining the fields, anything that needed to be done. Two years into this now, we're still finding out that this is a 40-hour position. It may slow down. We're not 100% sure, but, um, only time will tell, unfortunately. But the other unintended consequence was, this position was just hired for the DPW, but when he was now the Buildings and Grounds Foreman, he was taken away from the DPW, which meant now I had two people who didn't, um, do any work for the DPW, because they were doing other jobs. So I decided that, well, maybe I could hire a part-time person and have the others, um, transfer station attendant come up to the DPW as a full-time employee, as full-time saying the other two hour, two days he doesn't work. So he'd work Monday through Friday now, instead of, um, Tuesday through Saturday. Um, so I brought this up to the, to the boards, and, um, after looking at it, we decided that this would be a good, a good way to help, uh, adjust the, the consequences I've, uh, the, the people I've lost with the new positions they've done. Um, so I, I'm asking that, you know, this will definitely help out the, the DPW. Uh, may take a little getting used to at the transfer station, because now you'll have a, somebody new that will be helping you out up there. Um, but it is not have anything to do with, um, making sure everything gets thrown in the right bins or having too many, you know, an additional employee up there. There's still only going to be two. Um, so I, you know, I would recommend that we, we hire the employee, but again, that's, you know, it's up to the residents here. Um, but I'd like to still be able to provide all the services I did four years ago, which I can't do now.
Seeing no one at a microphone. All in favor of the motion under Article 7? Raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed? Raise your green cards. That motion carries by majority. Motion under Article 8, Select Board, please.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,737 to support the increased hours and provide related compensation for the treasurer-collector.
Moved and seconded. Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board recommends for the reasons printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee, majority recommendation?
Majority of the Finance Committee recommends that treasurer-collector routinely works in excess of 40 hours a week.
Finance Committee, minority opinion?
The minority believes that the town should pause staffing increases this year. Over the last several years, the town has added staff and/or staffing hours, while the school has been forced to make significant staff cuts. In addition, within the next few years, the town pension obligation is predicted to become the largest budget driver, second only to the schools. This model continues to be unsustainable.
Microphone to my right, please.
Adam Klein, 85 Wickham Road. Uh, yet again, another Raise and Appropriate article. Um, I just want to read out, this year, the services that we've lost at our schools includes 1.9 FTE of reading assistance, one math specialist, one certified librarian, five-and-a-half general education assistants. That's just at the elementary school. At the junior high, we've now lost a science teacher...
Adam, this is about the treasurer-collector?
I understand, and I am, my point is that we continue to add services to the town's budget while we continue to cut dramatic services to the school's budget. There are over 20 FTE that have been cut from the school's services while we again add services to the town budget. Saying that, I understand that saying not having someone to collect taxes is kind of like cutting off your feet when you're trying to run down a marathon, but the point is, we're about to see some items that include collective bargaining agreements, which are going to have significant additional tax implications to the town. Five-and-a-half percent operating budget increase for the town when there's only a 2% operating budget for the schools. It's not only unsustainable, at some point, it's unfair.
Uh, microphone to my left. Name and address, please.
Chris, Christine Marlowe, 880 Depot Road. I just want to understand more about this position, because all I know is that when I send my taxes, they go to a, you know, place in Reading, um, in my excise taxes. So can you just explain what the treasurer-collector does and why these hours are needed? Thank you.
Please answer.
So, at the treasurer-collector's office, um, they do both the function of collecting, uh, money, revenues for, for the town, as well as they, they do the borrowing, they do the paying of bills, they do the payroll, they do the accruals for employee vacation, sick, and, and personal leave. Um, these are all critical functions of the town. And, um, a little over two years ago, um, we, we hired a treasurer-collector, and, um, she has been understaffed, and her hours are not enough to complete the functions. She does complete the functions by working more than the hours, um, that she's being paid for. Um, I don't think that's right. Um, I think we need to be paying people for the hours that they work. And so that's why we're looking to increase this, uh, three hours to get it up to 35 hour, hours from 32 hours per week.
Okay, so it's only, you're not going to 40 hours? You're going to...
That's correct. We're going up three hours, up to 35 hours per week.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Microphone to my right. Name and address, please.
Yeah, Jim Howery, Reed Farm Row. Just a question on the history of this position. I know this is a new, new person, several years. Was this a full-time position prior to this recent hire?
Yes, in a manner of speaking. And, and the reason I answer like that is, when I came here, we had a treasurer-collector who had an arrangement where he was allowed to work, um, some remote and some in-person. Um, at one point, um, shortly after my arrival, he asked if he could go down to more, more remote work, less in-person work. And for anyone who's been to the treasurer-collector's office, which is probably just about everyone here, you see that it is a public-facing position. People come in with questions, they come in with checks. Um, this is someone who needs to meet the public. Um, the, the person didn't like my answer of no, that you have to be at work when, when the town hall is open, uh, and they abruptly left. And so we went for several months without a treasurer-collector. One, uh, by law, we need to have that position. Two, operationally, we, we absolutely have to have that to, to avoid liability, to be able to collect revenues and, and to pay the town's bills. Um, so we went several months. I'll give you a little more history, and that is that we advertised, so it was paid at a 40-hour position. We advertised the 40-hour position, and for over two months, we, we couldn't get qualified applicants to, um, to apply. Um, we interviewed some, they just weren't qualified. They either didn't have municipal experience, they didn't have treasury or banking experience, um, just, just not the qualifications that we would want to bring to manage such an important function. Um, so I had an idea, and that was that, you know, the, the pay wasn't high enough. And that's, that was the response we were getting from, from applicants. And as I looked around, i- it wasn't. Uh, so what I did was I essentially took the salary, annual salary, kept it the same, reduced the 40 hours down to 32 hours, thereby raising the hourly rate. And two things, hoping, one, to attract, uh, someone with a higher hourly rate, and two, attract someone, uh, who had to work four days a week and had three days off. And that was very successful. We got, uh, a highly qualified pool, uh, many applicants, and we, we hired someone who's, uh, an exceptional worker, very hardworking, dedicated, smart, and has learned the job very well. Um, sometime later, in fact, last August, the administrative assistant, um, who, uh, the, the treasurer-collector and assistant town administrator and I had continued to, to prod, to get more out of, um, didn't, let's say, wasn't willing to rise to the expectations that we were looking for, and decided to leave for other employment. Um, we have recently hired someone who we had very high hopes for, uh, but even with that new person on board, we know that we need more hours from our treasurer-collector, the person that's actually borrowing for the town, the only person who can, who can do that. Um, so, so that's, that's kind of the history of it. Did that answer your question, sir?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, seeing no one at or approaching a microphone? Okay, Becky, hold your horses there. All in favor of the motion under Article 8? Raise your green cards, please. Cards down, all opposed? That motion carries. Motion under Article 9, please, Select Board.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $42,000 to fund the cost items of the first year of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the United Public Service Employees Union, local 242M unit, MADIV 125, DPW Union, covering the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028.
Moved and seconded. Recommendation, Select Board?
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee recommendation?
FinCom recommends unanimously.
Adam at the right microphone.
It was a little slow that time.
Yeah.
Uh, again, we're going to have more of these articles coming up. I totally respect and appreciate the work that the DPW does, and in fact, I will be voting in favor of this. But let's please remember that all of these things add up, and next year, when the schools come to you with an assessment increase of close to 10%, that's not frivolous. That's us maintaining a very minimal level of service that we're at now. So I appreciate the DPW. I will vote in favor of this, but I just want the town meeting to understand that what you're voting for is a year-over-year increase in salaries that will cost us and will continue to hurt us as we get closer to our levy limit, as the Finance Committee showed us this evening.
Microphone to my right. Name and address, please.
Susan Bach, 59 Burrows Road. Is someone going to explain exactly what's in the contract? I certainly did that when I was on the Select Board. Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mike.
So this, this three-year contract includes, um, cost of living increases of 2.75 in year one, starting in FY '26, this July 1st, and then in years two and three, which is FY '27 and '28, um, there are 3% increases. Um, these, these increases, uh, have been negotiated the same across all three of the unions. Uh, you'll be looking at the next two articles. They're the, the same cost of living increases for the next, um, for the next three years of this contract. And, and it does line up very well with, with the rest, with the personnel plan and, and other staff, uh, around town. There was, there was also a, a wage, um, schedule adjustment, because, uh, we were, we were falling behind our comparable communities. Uh, so there was a, a very moderate, uh, scale adjustment. There also were stipend increases, uh, for additional licenses and, um, and certifications that were useful to the town, to the DPW, to the services they provide that are above and beyond, uh, those that are required for hiring. Um, and the dollar for those stipends, uh, was increased from $260 per, per license up to, uh, to a new, um, $400, uh, per, per stipend. Uh, also, we negotiated a, a mutually beneficial, um, addition to this contract, which is, uh, medical insurance opt-out stipend. And so it's, um, it's, it's good for the employee who doesn't need to take the health insurance here in town, uh, if they can, uh, get it somewhere else, either under, um, parental plan or, or with their spouse. Uh, but it's, it's very beneficial to the town, because it saves us a lot of money. Uh, health insurance is one of our be, biggest expenses. Um, we also, um, we also negotiated, uh, to build a safety committee within the DPW so they can work with the DPW director and look at, uh, best practices and come up with ideas as the workforce that's, that's working directly with the tools, um, you know, in, in the trades, and make recommendations to make their work and the work environment safer. And that's what's included in this contract.
All right, seeing no one at or approaching a microphone. All in favor of the motion under Article 9? Please raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed? That motion carries. Motion under Article 10, Select Board?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $76,000 to fund the cost items of the first year of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and Boxborough Professional Firefighters, local 4601, the fire union, covering the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028.
So, moved and seconded. Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board recommends unanimously. Would you like Mike to go through the numbers now or after?
Uh, no, you stick with the recommendation. Let's just question. Finance Committee recommendation?
FinCom approves unanimously.
Uh, comments on the floor? Right microphone, please.
Adam Klein, 85 Wickham Road. I am in support of this. I do want to point out that two and a half years ago, we negotiated a, a contract with our teachers' union. We negotiated a 1.75% increase the first year, a 2.75% increase the following year, and a 2.75% increase for this year. Next year, we go into contract negotiations, and if you followed anything in the news, teachers have been striking. Our teachers are very tired. They've been asked to do more. We've continued to cut their positions. We need to be careful about how we approach our budgeting for next year.
Microphone to my left, please.
Sharon Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. I apologize. I should have asked this question under number nine, Article 9, but I just noticed it. Uh, underneath the article number, it says TBD, Raise and Appropriate. Do we actually have numbers for these articles that we're voting?
Yes, they're up on the screen. This one is $76,000.
Oh, thank you.
And the previous one was $42,000.
Yeah, so, so yeah, again, the reminder that we have motions on the screen that will differ from the warrant based on information at the time. See, oh, another person approaching the microphone, left.
Nathan Stuns, 533 Hill Road. Can you explain the numbers like you did on the last one? Thank you.
Please proceed.
Yes, so as I mentioned, the, the cost of living is 2.75 in year one, 3% in years two and three. Um, there's a moderately increased wage schedule. Um, and there is an education incentive, uh, increase. The, the, uh, education incentive already exists, but we're increasing that moderately for EMT firefighters who hold either an associate's, bachelor's, or master's degree. Um, there was also an increase to the, uh, to the detail rate. Um, and then there was, there was also language which was, uh, very beneficial to the town, which included, uh, light duty. In other words, if somebody is injured on the job, uh, rather than them being out and getting paid, we could bring them back if the doctor approved them for light duty and maybe do its administrative work or something less physically strenuous. And that's, uh, those are the main points on this contract.
Seeing no one at a microphone. All those in favor of the motion under Article 10? Raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed? That motion carries. Motion under Article 11, Select Board, please.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to fund the cost items for the first year of collective bargaining agreement between the town and Massachusetts Coalition of Police, local 200, the police union, covering the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028.
Select Board recommendation?
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee recommendation?
FinCom recommends unanimously.
Speaker at the microphone to my right, please.
Liz Folks, 155 Stowe Road, giving Adam a break. Uh, just wanted to reiterate that the schools are taking... Just wanted to reiterate that the schools are taking a cut for the fourth year in a row while we are raising and appropriating funds. I am in support of this, it is part of the contracts, just to keep it in mind. Next year, we are anticipating level services, which would be between $600 to $800 per resident, if that was what, based on the numbers from this year, just to keep that number in mind.
Seeing no one at a, oh, Chad's coming to the microphone.
Chad Childers, Middle Road. So this is 60,000? Is that the total amount? And what's the breakdown?
All right, back to the numbers, Mike.
Yes, 60,000 is the total amount for this police union contract for three years, and the breakdown is similar for the years, 2.75 in Year 1, 3% in Years 2 and 3. This includes career incentive pay, again, something they already get, but there was a moderate increase in that for officers who hold associate, bachelor's, or master's degree. There was also, similar to fire, there was an increase in the detail rate. And then there was some language cleanup. We had issues in the past with some language that was not easy to interpret, and there was some friction over that. So we cleaned that up, and it related to comp time and holiday language, so we cleaned those up, and that was for a total of $60,000.
Okay. Now, the 3%, is that a higher percentage than we're doing for the other town?
It's exactly the same.
All right, seeing no one else at a microphone. All those in favor of the motion under Article 11, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed? That motion carries by majority. Okay. We are now on to the Financial Non-Capital Consent Agenda. Articles 12 through 25 have been identified as the Financial Non-Capital Consent Agenda articles.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Question. Okay, so I'm just curious, it's five minutes of 10. If, so for the consent agenda, we're going to pick which ones we want to talk about, which ones we want to consent, right? And then we vote the consent agenda, but then do we have to do all the other articles? Because we said we wouldn't start new things after 10, but I wasn't sure because they were in the consent agenda, if we pulled them out?
We'll start now, and if there's ones pulled out, we can debate them individually. If we end up debating all of them individually and it gets late, we can always have a motion to adjourn at some point that...
So the answer's yes.
And I think you voted for 10:30.
Oh, I thought we did 10, maybe it was 4, Ian.
Okay, these articles were unanimously recommended by the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and have been identified in advance as items that would likely pass without debate and are intended to be acted upon as a unit. So we'll now go through those items one by one, similar to earlier this evening. If anybody has a question or concern, you can yell out "Hold" in a loud voice or get to the microphone and say "Hold," and we'll remove that particular item from the consent agenda. After I get to Article Number 25, and I've read that, I will ask for a motion from Chair Hilberg for all the articles remaining on the consent agenda to be passed as a unit. We'll then go back and do any of the individuals that were held. So, starting with Article 12, Department Revolving Funds Expense Limits.
Hold.
Okay, we're holding Article 12. Article 13, Closed Completed Articles to General Fund. Article 14, Chapter 90, Highway Embolts Program. Article 15, Assessor Cyclical Reevaluation. Hold on Article 15. Article 16, Cable Services and Equipment. Article 17, Other Post-Employment Benefits, O P E D, Trust Fund. Article 18, Staff Professional Development. Hold on Article 18. Article 19, Fire Department, Recruit Academy Training, Coverage, Contingency, and Fire Department Physicals. Article 20, Fire Department, Cistern, Inspections and Repairs. Article 21, Emergency Management. Article 22, Police and Fire Injury Coverage Transfer. Article 23, Prudent Investment. Hold on Article 23, Prudent Investment. Article 24, Modified Boxborough Emergency Assistance Program, the beep. Hold on the beep, 24. Article 25, Veterans Tax Exemption Annual Cost of Living Increase. Hold on Article 25. All right, so let's go back through carefully so Kristen can get the motion on the consent agendas correctly. We're holding on Number 12, Number 15, Number 18, Number 23, Number 24, and Number 25. So I'll need a motion from Kristen for 13, 14, 16, 17, 19, 21, and 22.
No, 20, I have 20 on my list. Did anybody hold 20?
Nope, 20 also, I'm sorry, Mike.
Hey, no, checks and balances, it's all good.
All right, good, we're checked and balanced on that one.
I move to approve the annual town meeting financial non-capital consent agenda warrant articles, numbers 13, 14, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22, in accordance with the funding sources and amounts set forth in the May 12th, 2025 annual town meeting warrant, under Articles 13, 14, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22, respectively.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion as made? Raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed? That motion carries by majority. Okay, now we will go back and have individual motions on the articles that were held. We will start with a motion under Article 12, Select Board, please. That's got Kristen's name on it.
Aren't we doing 15?
12, 12 was the first one that was held.
Sorry, I'm skipping ahead, I'm skipping ahead, I'm skipping ahead. Okay. I move that the town vote under the provisions of G L C 44, Section 53 E 1/2, as most recently amended, and the Town's revolving fund bylaw, to set the fiscal year 2026 spending limits for the Town's revolving funds as follows. G I S assessors' maps, $5,000. Conservation commission, $20,000. Community gardens, $2,000. Fire alarm system maintenance, $20,000. Plumbing and gas inspections, $100,000. Electrical inspections, $150,000. Animal control, $2,400. Council on Aging Programs, $25,000. Senior van, $32,000. Library fines, $10,000. Two thou, I'm sorry, library photocopier, $2,500. Recreation all programs, $120,000. And steel farm, $15,000.
Sir, second. Moved and seconded, Select Board Recommendation?
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finkcomb recommends unanimously.
Questions on the floor, microphone to my right, please.
Kathy Vorse, 555 Liberty Square Road. My question was whether we could get an explanation on the reduction in the animal control line from 75,000 to 2,400.
Does anyone have an answer to that question?
Give us a second.
So there's a reduction in the animal control line this year from 75,000 to 2,500. This is, since the town is no longer part of the IMA with Stowe and Littleton, this expense can be significantly reduced. So it was, you know, the only thing we need that for now is for kenneling services, and then much less which is the town. We don't need, you know, all the other from the two larger towns.
Kathy, if you have a question, please go to the microphone so people can hear you.
Right, not only did we go from a full-time employee service in three towns, we went to a very small part-time, 13 and a half hours per week, just for our town. So the income there is just far reduced from what it was, so we don't need as large a limit for the revolving fund.
Seeing no one at or approaching a microphone. All in favor of the motion under Article 12, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That motion carries by majority. Motion under Article 15, Select Board.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be spent by the town assessor for cyclical inspections, periodic personnel, and real property valuations, full valuations, interim statistical updates, and the related software and upgrades.
Moved and seconded, Recommendation Select Board.
The Select Board unanimously recommends, for reasons stated in the summary, to meet the Department of Revenue requirements for the assessment.
Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finkcomb recommends unanimously.
Going to the microphones, to my left, please.
The summary in the warrant refers to an authorization from FY '21, so I went back and I looked up that warrant just to see what that was about. It was, it included the details for $120,000, including a breakdown for software and consulting, plus an additional amount to inspect 1,000 residential and commercial properties. And at the time, the assessor would undertake to inspect an additional 1,000 properties. I understand that there's been some staffing changes since that time, and so maybe the assessor's portion didn't quite get met. I would have still expected that that funding should have covered quite a significant portion of town, considering the town only has about 2,500 parcels. There's another article in ATM 23 and 24, also authorizing $30,000, raise and appropriate your tax money to continue this work. So this is the third time we're asking for $30,000. I did ask for an accounting of the original 120 and these two subsequent $30,000 appropriations. The $120,000 has not been completely spent. The two $30,000, according to the records that I received, have not been spent. And so now we're asking to tax again another $30,000 for work that's not being done. Do we have contracts in place to get this work done?
Do we have an answer to that one, Mike?
Is Kelly here to come up and answer that? My understanding is that, and I don't have the information that you just presented, but my understanding was that 30,000 used to happen, excuse me, the 120,000 used to happen like every four or five years, that's what I understood when I arrived here, and there was a move to break that down to every year so that it wasn't a big hit every four or five years. That's my understanding.
So the background on that 120,000 was for a significant software upgrade and to do some cyclical evaluations, that every parcel in town is supposed to be inspected at least once every nine to 10 years. I don't know if you know when the last time yours was inspected, but I checked my property record card, in three different places, I had three different values for this current year, and the photograph is from 1990. So I know that mine hasn't been updated, and that should have been one of the first ones done in that valuation in the interim year when we did that upgrade. Generally, the D O R comes through and does a revaluation year every five years. That was two years ago. So we were trying to get ahead of that game in '21, and I'm sure that we went through our revale, so that cost would have only been incurred once every five years. And I can tell you that for a town this size, $30,000 once every five years is sufficient. So if we do not have contracts in place currently with the current appropriation that we've already been taxed on, I would suggest getting a contract in place and encumbering that money and passing over this article. So moved.
Point of order, can't move and comment.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Moved to pass over?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor, you can't pass over once it's been moved and seconded.
Oh, okay. So point of order, what is the appropriate procedure?
We would defeat the motion.
You can vote it down.
Okay.
I would actually suggest perhaps we table it and ask the assessor to come and speak to us tomorrow, because we don't have the information at hand, unless the Finance Committee has the, we don't know if there's a contract or not. So I'm a little uncomfortable defeating this without having all the information, we don't want to hamstring the assessor. So I'd prefer to table and bring it up tomorrow and ask her to be here.
Okay, well, the way to do that would be move to lay on the table, and it's not debatable, it's a two-thirds. So if we do that, then you would then have to make a motion to take it off the table tomorrow.
I could do that.
So you're making, all right, the motion is...
I move to lay on the table. Good Lord! And I hate the schools, and I don't believe in Santa Claus.
Okay, this is rarely used here, but I think we're gonna, I hope we get it right. It's a motion to lay this one on the table, and with the clear intent to pick it up tomorrow when we can get better information. It's not debatable, it's a two-thirds. All in favor, raise your green cards. All opposed, raise your green cards. That carries by the two-thirds required. We'll presumably return to it tomorrow. All right, where were we? That was Number 15.
I'm usually embedded at 30, this is really late for me. Okay. I move that the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to support staff professional development and training, including cost of necessary materials or consultants, and all other costs incidental and related thereto.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, Select Board Recommendation?
The Select Board recommends, for the reasons printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finkcomb recommends unanimously.
Microphone to my right, please.
Kathy Vorse, Liberty Square Road. The question is, who are we training with this money?
Yeah, please answer if you can.
The intention is for the town to send a team of four department heads from different departments to a training in Cambridge at the Public Sector Consortium, which is located at the Lincoln Land Institute, and the course of study is called Leadership Matters. It's an 18-month program, and we have received some scholarship and some grant funding towards this. The 15,000 is the remainder of the tuition. So the team would go, and they would learn on a number of different topics, facilitating effective and efficient meetings, they would learn about negotiation strategy, they would learn about, what's the other two? Strategic leadership and facilitating meetings. And then what they would do is after they get their classroom learning on Fridays and Saturdays over a number of months, then they would work on a community project. This team of four would come up with a project that would benefit the town of Boxborough, they would come back and work with the rest of the staff, as well as community volunteers that are interested in participating in this project for, to both increase the capacity of leadership in our staff, as well as in increase the public engagement, or whatever it is they decide to involve the community in. And that's what this one... And that's what this funding is for.
And have you identified which four department heads you're gonna send?
Yes, I have. I have invited our library director, our police chief, our assistant town administrator and our land use director to participate as a team. They have all filled out applications, sent them in to the Public Sector Consortium and been accepted as a team of four representing the town of Boxborough. Along with that, this program has a limited space. The teams can only be four and they can either represent a municipality in New England or a school district in New England. And when I attended this, it's probably been about eight years ago, I believe there were eight or nine teams from all over New England. And so while we were learning with each other, we were also learning from other communities around New England and then broken up. So you're not always working with the same group until you get back to your team community project.
Thank you, sounds really worthwhile. Thank you.
Seeing no one at a microphone. All in favor of the motion under Article 18, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed. That motion carries by majority. Motion under Article, I gotta flip my page. Article 23. Select Board Motion.
To see if the town will vote to accept the provision of general law, Chapter 44.
Bob, you need the motion packet, I believe.
Sorry, sorry about that. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of general law, Chapter 44, Subchapter 54B, to allow the town trust funds to be invested in accordance with general law, Chapters 203C, the so-called prudent investment rule.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Select Board Recommendation.
The Select Board recommends 5 to 0. The Select Board unanimously recommends the passage of this article. Prudent investing as permitted on the mass general law enables the town treasurer, the town's investment advisor and the Select Board to make strategic adjustments within the framework, excuse me, within the framework of the state's approved list of investments. This list has recently expanded to include mutual funds, individual stocks and bonds. By embracing this updated approach, the town can reduce its concentration risk, achieve a more balanced and diverse portfolio and ultimately enhance potential returns.
Recommendation for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the passage of this article unanimously. The prudent investing rule facilitates the construction of a well-diversified portfolio. However, the Finance Committee expects the town to maintain its conservative long-term investment approach using a well-regulated, liquid, low-cost, highly transparent parent investment vehicles. These criteria do not support investments in private equity.
Speaker to my left, please.
I would like to hear a recommendation from the cemetery trustees and the library trustees as this is clearly impacting some of the funds under their control, not under the treasurer's control. And I'd also like a list of what else is included in trust funds that's not cemetery and scholarship and library. I believe there are others.
Is there anyone from cemetery or library? I see library trustee Mary Brolin approaching the right mic.
Mary Brolin, 153 Guggins Lane. I'm a library trustee. We have not voted on this, but I would say that the town always invests our library funds. And so I can say I personally would be in support of this because I think that FinCom and the Select Board have been, and the town administration have been prudent about our investments.
Anyone from cemetery available for comment? All right, Owen, name and address. You haven't been to the mic at all this year, have you?
I have not. Owen Neville, 317 Middle Road. I'm on the cemetery commission, I happen to be the chair right now. My understanding is that our trust, our Perpetual Care Trust Fund and our Grace Priest Trust Fund, which we share with the library, are managed, I believe the group that the treasurer uses is the Bartholomew Group and that none of the trust funds are discriminated and invested, you know, individually, that it's all a lump. We have had no, I have not, I've been on since 2021, I think. We have not been aware that, in fact, I don't believe we've ever been considered commissioners of any trust fund. So I always thought that was the Select Board. But that's just going back years. So we have no opinion on this. And I would love to be enlightened if we have further responsibilities. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
As far as the other part of the question, those were the only three that I'm aware that you called out, library, scholarship and cemetery.
Is the OPEB money not in a trust? And the stabilization? Are those being considered under prudent investment as well?
They are, they're not separately managed. Those are under the, those are managed by the treasurer. Both, yeah, both those, stabilization and OPEB.
So those would not be, those would fall under this prudent investment rule?
Would, yes.
Microphone to my left.
Christine Marlowe, 880 Depot Road. Do you have a investor in mind that you are gonna be using? Or is there a process to find a reputable person or company to invest the funds?
We do, we have someone that the town has been using. I think many municipalities use Bartholomew Investments. They're the ones that have been managing our funds and we've been satisfied with them. We plan to continue with them for the foreseeable future.
Thank you.
Microphone to my left.
Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. So I might need some history on this. But my recollection is, the current practice is basically to be hyper-conservative. To the point where I know in years past, the town treasurer, when Margaret was the treasurer, and Jennifer, you can help me with this one. Margaret Dennehy, I'm sorry. She was unable to draw down on trust funds because the yield was not sufficient to draw out the interest that was earned on the trust fund and still keep the trust fund solvent. So is the intention of the prudent trust fund, excuse me, prudent investment to provide us more, to the recommendations, provide us with more flexibility where we potentially have the ability to see a higher yield to benefit the town?
That's the exact intention of this. And we would only be going to the extent that allowed by mass general law. And this prudent investor strategy is something that opens up other avenues. You know, with your own portfolios, you can invest, you know, more wisely than the town has been able to, you know, before this. This would, you're exactly right. It would allow the town to make more money on its money.
And then one last question. Is the Affordable Housing Trust falling under this umbrella also?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Seeing no one at the microphone. All in favor of the motion under Article 23, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise the green cards. That motion carries by majority. Motion under Article 24, Select Board.
Article 24, Modified Boxborough Emergency Assistance Program, VEAP. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of maintaining the Boxborough Emergency Assistance Program, including all incidental and related thereto.
Moved and seconded, Select Board Recommendation.
The Select Board recommends unanimously for the reasons stated in the summary.
Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the Boxborough Emergency Assistance Program has helped numerous residents since its inception in 2020.
Recommendation from the Well-Being Committee.
Mary Pavlik, 34 Middle Road. The Well-Being Committee recommends unanimously and the BEAP, this is a modification of the BEAP program which has provided direct support for residents in crisis and increase the visibility and connection of residents to the Community Service Coordinator. This is the money that our Community Service Coordinator can use to help residents of the town.
Seeing, oh, microphone to my left.
I'm just calling attention to the raise and appropriate portion of this. We've had discussions about adding more money to our tax base. This is a program that I understand helps people in need. But as taxpayers, are you willing to help them through your tax bill? Or maybe make a donation to a nonprofit that can be used for outreach to help them through channels that are already set up for helping people in need? Setting this up as part of our tax base on potentially a recurring basis seems to me personally, in my interpretation of mass general law that says a town may appropriate money for corporate powers and shall not appropriate or expend money for any purpose that are inconsistent with the law. This does not seem to be a specifically public purpose. This seems to be more of an individual purpose under the town's public operating. I want you to think about that as, is this something that you want to be spending your tax money on? We've already discussed adding extra staff, cutting hours, adding hours, cutting people at the schools because our taxes are growing. Maybe if you've got an extra $5 in your pocket, you can give it to the United Way, who can then help. This program has been funded through grants and other nonprofits. It has never been funded through the town. I believe that that is a more appropriate way to help our residents. Instead of raising taxes for every member of our town, especially our senior citizens and with all of the problems we're gonna be facing in the next few years. This seems to be one that we can possibly avoid.
Okay, microphone to my left.
I believe that.
Oh, sorry, Mary, you were getting up to speak again, I didn't realize that. Microphone to my right, Mary, if you were standing to wait.
I believe that Michael Johns did speak to the town attorney about the laws, about the legality of this, right? You want to speak to that, Mike?
I did, but I'd rather refer to our attorney.
Yes, so in order to use public funds, there needs to be a public purpose. My understanding in speaking to the town administrator, this is a program that has been in place in the town for a number of years, albeit utilizing a different source of funds. It's my understanding that the town has made essentially a policy decision that having a program like this in town is a benefit to the town in general, to have these services provided to its residents and that that is the identified public purpose, that is the public purpose of the town's identified purposes of this article.
Thank you. We, it is late. We are, Community Service Coordinator is here. She has a presentation to let people know the specifics of how this program work. We have given out over $100,000 through the COVID Relief Fund money to people in the town and it has made deep connections to the United Way, to other resources by getting someone in with the Community Service Coordinator. I don't know if we want to have a presentation at this point in detail about this program, but we could certainly provide one and introduce you to Wendy, our Community Services Coordinator.
Question, comment, microphone to my left.
So my question is, in the body of the summary, it seems that up to fiscal 2026, this program was funded through ARPA. Is that correct, Mary? Okay.
That was a yes.
Yeah, that was a yes. So as we twilight ARPA funding, is this, is, excuse me, is ARPA funding now been twilighted in fiscal '26? Okay, so Wendy says yes.
Can we have Wendy come to the front? This is our Community Services Coordinator. She has a level of detail that people may want to.
This is be appropriate, thank you. So the question's about the previous fiscal year funding?
The ARPA funding ended December 31st, 2024.
Okay. So this is a 20,000, we've previously funded this program at a level of 78-plus, 78,000-plus.
Yes.
So my question is, forward-looking and best of intentions, what is the Well-Being Committee's intention for funding this? We're doing $20,000 tonight, going forward into the future. What are their projected funding for the coming years to continue to support these programs?
Is that a Well-Being or Community Services Coordinator?
I would say, I would call this a pilot program at this point. We saw the high success level of using the funds that we did receive through the ARPA funding in terms of not only assisting the clients, particularly with the actual money that they got, grants, $1,000 and less, but the connections that were able to be made to the Community Services Coordinator. So we have not projected into the future yet. We are using, we are looking at this as a pilot to see how this works.
Okay, and then on the flip is, if you've previously funded at 78-plus, why are you only asking for 20 this year?
Can I answer that, Mary? Sure. So the 78 was over two years. And I brought to Capitol Saturday this proposal for $10,000. And both the Select Board and the Finance Committee asked that exact same question. And they said, 10,000 is not enough, let's make it 20,000. And the reason, so that would be for one year. The reason that it's modified is because the original program was written for $1,000 grants. These would be a maximum of $500 grants.
Thank you.
Microphone to my right, please.
Mary Brolin, 153 Guggins Lane. I can't cite the specific studies off the cuff, but research demonstrates that this type of money helps valuable members of our community stay in their houses and get the short-term help that they need. It's short money for each individual to help them overcome significant events and continue to be valued members of our community.
Microphone to my left, please.
I move to amend this motion by replacing the words raise and appropriate with the words free cash.
Is there a second? I heard a second out there, moved and seconded. Would you care to explain your reasoning?
As stated, this is a pilot program. I think adding it to the tax base this year seems a little presumptuous. If we can fund it with free cash, we might be able to get more detailed explanations and history back up for future years.
I have history for two years too, if you have specific questions.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded. There's been some explanation of the amendment to change it from raise and appropriate to free cash. Does everyone understand that? Okay, does FinCom have a recommendation on this? Do you need to caucus?
Yeah, we recommend we do not move to free cash. So we are trying to preserve free cash for the future year, or future years. This also, as a pilot program, we do expect it to be an ongoing program. So we think it should be budgeted in the operating budget as the RNA articles are. So just for management purposes, we think it should be, remain as raised and appropriate.
Recommendation from the Select Board? Recommendation from the Select Board?
This time I'm gonna, we're gonna do thumbs up, thumbs down. All right, everybody, thumbs up or thumbs down for free cash. Okay, split vote, two in favor, three against.
All right, microphone to my left, please.
John Fallon, 500 Paddock Lane. I think technically speaking, that should be to transfer from free cash.
So that's a comment on, I'll just say, not the intent of the amendment, but the exact semantics involved? Does everybody understand what the wording, precise wording should be? Transfer from free cash. So the, yes, the intent is still the same, it's a different funding source. We just want to get the wording exactly right on the screen. All right, I turned my head. Who was here first? Microphone to the right, please.
Chris Dowdy, Liberty Square. So I seconded because I also have a little bit of concern about raise and appropriate for something that we might want to continually fund. It was originally funded to grants. I completely support the program. I think the most appropriate funding method for that program is grants. I get that for the next year or five, the availability of that kind of funding to assist people in need might be tenuous at best. So we might need to find alternate methods. I think free cash makes sense for a kind of one-year period, and then we kind of see how things look. Hopefully grant funding becomes available, that's things we can apply for and win. I think it's a program that is absolutely worthwhile to keep running. But the raise and appropriate aspect, when we're considering the pros and cons of various other things that are being added to the tax base, I think it's a way to allow this program to continue, but to still be cautious about it.
Okay, microphone to my left. Again, it's the amendment to change the funding source we're talking about now.
Yes, Cheryl Mahoney, 188 Liberty Square Road. This is actually Mr. Moderator to the FinCom. Tony, you noted that you were looking to preserve free cash. Budget was a long, long time ago. Can you give us what, if all the articles that you're seeking to use free cash for are passed tonight, where is that going to leave us if this amendment succeeds?
They need to do some math here, hold on, Cheryl.
So if everything, everything is passed tonight from free cash, there'll be 2.423 million left in free cash.
And what's your comfortable percentage that you like to maintain?
That is 8.3% of the operating budget. Our limit is five, you know, it has to be above 5% of the operating budget. That's our guideline we've set ourselves. So we have a 3% buffer there, so not a lot, really.
So would this 20 have a detrimental impact?
It's not material to it, no. This is more a question of policy of how we decide to fund various items. We have sort of guidelines about what we fund from free cash, what we fund from bonding, what we fund from raise and appropriate, based on where they're going to end up in future years and in the budget. So, you know, we're just dickering with details here a little bit here about where these things comes from. But this is, you know, we're trying to have some sort of straightforward guidelines here for now and for future years.
Thank you.
Okay, in the order of coming to the microphone, I think we're still at the left before we go to the right. Again, we're talking about the amendment to change the funding source.
Christine Marlowe, 880 Depot. So I guess this is a, I'm just asking a question for procedure. If this passes or it fails, can we then go back to this article and ask more questions on the article?
Yes, what we'll do is, we're taking up the amendment now to change the funding source. We'll vote on that, a pass or fail, and then we'll go back to the main motion as amended. And if you have more questions on the original motion, you can make them then.
Great, thank you.
Okay, microphone to my right, name and address.
Dave Follow, 120 Cobley. Yeah, completely support what you're trying to do here. I'm a little uncomfortable with town meeting trying to micromanage the FinCom. They spend a lot of time and they have a lot of expertise, and they look at this on a weekly basis. And I think that town meeting should just let them do what they do best, so I would vote against this.
Okay, microphone to my right.
Cindy Markowitz, Meadow Lane. Just a kind of a question for mechanics for something like this. Is this the only program in town right now that we are requesting funds to support our community in this way?
Is this about the amendment or the main motion?
Well, I'm trying to understand-
The funding sources?
The funding sources?
Okay, funding sources, okay, that's a fair question, yes.
The only other article is part of the Community Preservation Act for the Boxborough Rental Assistance Program.
So there's a percentage of funds out of our Community Preservation Fund, which is a mandatory 1% fee on our property taxes, and a percentage of that goes, so I guess-
But it's different families.
Okay, this is, this is not about the amendment.
Then I'll raise this when we get back to the motion, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, please. Okay, talking about the amendments still, I'm not seeing anyone at the microphone. All those in favor of the amendment, as printed on the screen now, to change the funding source, raise your green cards. All those opposed to the amendment? The amendment fails. We're back to the motion on Article 24 as originally presented. All right, Cindy, perfect time to get back up.
I'm close by. So as a follow-up question, I think it makes sense, in a way, to do this with the way, same way we do community preservation, which is a percentage of our tax base. And it sounds like we're already allocating some of that for community services. So I think my recommendation might be for the future to fund this, to make it a part of a line item in the Community Preservation Distribution Funds. It's a little more transparent, and it gives the folks a way to see how this funding is going to happen.
I don't think this would be eligible, but I'll let someone on the CPC here perhaps comment on eligibility. Just as a point of order. Because again, I think it's an important thing for people to understand.
John Fallon, 500 Paddock Lane, Chairman of the CPC. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm about 90% sure this kind of thing is not eligible. We'd have to do some research, because community preservation is basically doing things.
Well, that is my understanding of the Community Preservation Act as well, but that's why I asked the first question. Is there money from the CPC going towards a similar effort?
CPC can do historic preservation, open space, or housing. If it doesn't fall into one of those three categories, the basic rule is, and again, we can do research, but the basic rule is that it has to be one of those three categories. So I'm 90% sure we could only use this for housing grants.
So the other part of money is the BREP program, is that the one that's being funded?
The BREP program is in the CPA.
That's all, 100% of the funding for the rental program comes from CPC, because that is housing.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Microphone to my left, back to the main motion, yeah.
Christine Marlowe, 880 Depot. Mary, I think this question is for you. There was an earlier article that we voted on, and it was to help, you know, people in our community, seniors and other people. Would this not fall under that? Could that not be part of that?
This would essentially be part of the budget. Some of the money that the Community Service Coordinator would be able to disperse. At this point, she has none. So, and in fact, if Wendy has some things she could show, if people want to have more understanding on that.
Yeah, please proceed. I think people really want to understand this.
Yeah. It's been, and I might have misspoken when I said the word pilot. The thing that's new is the funding from the town. The program itself is not new.
So again, to answer a specific question, you can scroll, scroll ahead.
Okay, so this is historically what we have funded with that 78,000 in the last two years. It's broken out by type, and 45.2% is rental assistance. It helps prevent evictions. Utilities is a huge one, which is 22.85 to help present, prevent utility shut-offs. We also have helped with mortgages, childcare for people to continue to work during the summer. We also help with transportation. If someone's car is completely broken, or they need a medical, or they need an expense, this will allow them to keep going to work. And then we've helped also with some medical expenses for their debt. And this is very, very, I'm a very fiscal conservative person, and we vet the people. If you, if anybody wants to know the process, I have that up there. And then I also want to go to, and I also want to go to this slide, too. Out of the 82 grants, 29% were for seniors, and the other 71% were under 60 years old. And I thought that was a very, very interesting fact with these. And some people are in their homes, some people are in apartments, some people, it's just they lost their job, and they just need help managing that. The other thing that's been a total bonus of this program is the outreach to the community. People that come think, okay, well, maybe I'm coming for $500, but the outreach and what I do with the people is I help them with their fuel assistance, I help them. So the 500 isn't really, the, there's just so much more that's been done with meeting the people. It's exceeded expectations of making, helping them with mass health, helping them apply for SNAP, helping them apply for all other different programs. So it's beyond just this one thing.
And, so, but we've spent, before with the funding, we had 78,000.
Yeah.
And now you're asking for 20, so do you see grants and other things filling that void?
Yeah, so the 78,000 was over two years, so if you divide that by two, it's approximately 40. Those were $1,000 grants. Now we're making them, so if it was only $500 grants, that's $20,000. So we're modifying it, we're not giving them as much, because we've noticed that people come into my office and I'm able to find them other ways, like fuel assistance. I had several people came in and over $8,000 for new applicants. They don't know anything about it, and it just will help them get through the fuel assistance season. And that's not, that's state-funded money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I just want to restate what Wendy has just said, which is essentially by giving someone a grant that they, which actually, it's not literally in their hand, because it will go to their utility. They come in, let's say they need a utility bill paid. Then she speaks with them and then accesses the greater grants that are out in the community. They're very difficult for people to find. If you, and in part of the presentation we weren't able to give in showing her job, is that mostly what she does is she may help someone with a bit of money towards something they think that is their crisis. But then she can connect them to SNAP, to ABW, to a variety of different places. So it's, the money itself is not secondary, but it actually pulls people in, and she's able to provide them with many more resources that aren't from our community funds. So it really has, that is what we have seen with the program as it's been implemented the past two years. The tremendous need that there is in the community, and how giving someone a little bit to come in and actually come in the door, then she can help them access lots of things.
Speaker at the right microphone, please.
Ron Vogel, 60 Wheeler Drive. I move the question.
Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded that we stop debate on this article and vote. Takes a two-thirds. All those in favor of stopping debate, raise your green cards. All those opposed, that passes by the two-thirds required. We're now voting on the motion made under Article 24. Back to the screen, we know the amendment failed, it's the original motion. All those in favor, raise your green cards. All those opposed, raise your green cards. That passes by majority. Ms. Hilberg, we have one left on that consent leftover, or you can make your adjournment motion, whatever you prefer.
We'll just do it, okay, we're all here. Okay, I moved, that was me, well, well, I meant you, Dennis. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of MGLC 59, Section 5, Clause 220i, inserted by Chapter 178 of the Acts of 2024 entitled, "An Act Honoring, Empowering, and Recognizing Our Service Members and Veterans Known as the HERO Act, Providing for an Annual Increase in Property Tax Exemptions for Veterans" under the provisions of MGLC 59, Section 5, Clause 22, and Clauses 22A through 22C, 22E, and 22F, "Equal to the Cost of Living as Determined by the Consumer Price Index for Such Year."
Moved and seconded. Select Board Recommendation, please.
The Select Board recommends unanimously.
Finance Committee Recommendation, please.
FinCom approve unanimously.
Questions from the floor or microphone to my left?
I just want to state upfront, I am all in favor of supporting veterans and whatever we can do to help them. I have a question. Do we know, have we done a projection of what the impact of this acceptance would be?
Anyone have an answer to that?
James McCray did come to the Select Board, and yes, he did provide the number of veterans that are currently receiving this benefit. And unfortunately, I do not have it in front of me. Does anyone else on the board? Oh, James, are you here? Awesome. Oh, hello, come on up.
You just saved him from coming back again tomorrow.
Thank you. Come on up, James. Sorry about that, I didn't see you.
All right. Yeah, please introduce yourself to those who don't, aren't familiar with you.
Sure, James McCray, Veteran Services for Acton and Boxborough. It would be hard to project what the possible cost of living increase will be from year to year. That's determined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, I believe. What I can tell you is that for the Clause 22E, I believe, which is the most commonly utilized one, where it's currently at $800, I believe we have approximately 50 veterans that utilize that exemption. So a very small amount, and yet the most utilized out of all those exemptions. The next one up would be veterans who are rated 100% disabled by the VA, and they have, currently have a $2,000 exemption. Those amounts have been the same for at least 25 years. So what this does is kind of just tries to catch it up currently to where it should be, honestly. So I don't have exact numbers on how that would impact in the future, because we just don't know what the cost of living increases would be from year to year.
Understood, because we don't know that percentage. I did request some information in FY '25. The records show that there were 22 exemptions granted, and this doesn't specify which clause, for a total of 10,400. They've requested reimbursement from the state. The state only reimburses 4,950 of that 10,000, so about 50%. This acceptance of this clause will not increase the state reimbursement. The state reimbursement will stay at the same percentage as the original motion. So any increases to the exemptions is coming out of the overlay, which is part of your tax base.
Seeing no one at a microphone, all in favor of the motion under Article 25, raise your green cards. Cards down, all opposed, raise your green cards. That motion carries by majority. Ms. Hilberg, do we have another motion? Possibly?
To go home, yeah, I gotta find it. I hear a second. Dennis, do you remember what page it's on? I have so much paper here.
The motion packet, it's actually toward the front, it's in that procedural section, I believe.
Are we adjourning, or what are we doing?
Adjourning the annual town meeting until tomorrow night. Uh, adjourning the annual town meeting till tomorrow night, words to that effect.
I can do that. I move to adjourn the meeting, I move to, I, I move the May 12th, 2025 annual town meeting be adjourned until 7:00 PM tomorrow evening in the Blanch Memorial School Gymnasium.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn until tomorrow night. All in favor, raise your green cards. All opposed, raise your green cards. That motion carries by majority. We'll be back here tomorrow night. We're more than halfway done. Thank you, everyone, have a safe evening.